Welcome all to our December 4th, uh, she has the city council. Uh, can we please have a phone call for you? Mayor Brook, present.
Deputy Mayor Destin.
Here's Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Tate.
Here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman Warren.
Here.
Mayor Joe.
Present.
Senator Warren.
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, and let's rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful, thank you all. Um, I'm glad you are here. So, uh, we will, I know that many of you have come to talk to us regarding the, uh, the Lions Park tree. Um, before we begin this public comment period, I want you to know that we postponed the tree removal due to the potential of someone getting hurt as folks had planned to plant the tree and due to a large amount of misinformation that was spread about this. Um, so we want to hear from you. Uh, please know that the city has had an in-house arborist evaluate this tree and that we received, when we received a citizen's concern about the removal of it, we hired an outside arborist to provide a third-party opinion. Their recommendation states that this tree is a high liability for the safety of both people and property. It is estimated that the tree was planted around 1960 and the housing adjacent to the tree was constructed in the 1940s. Um, by 2006, this tree became an issue to some of its neighbors. Because it is a fast-growing tree, it is weaker and made more dangerous due to the split of its main trunk, resulting in two co-dominant stems with a very weak union. She does union fail and when we're told that the risk of this is high, then we all face the liability of destruction of property and even worse, the potential of someone getting hurt. These are the potential consequences of delaying this decision for future councils and taxpayers. Today, the cost of removing the tree is under $2,300. When we first received citizen concern regarding the removal of this tree, we put together a Lions Tree Subcommittee on September 2017. The results were the hiring of this third-party arborist to assure that we did not act in haste and without a second opinion. Since then, this tree has been discussed in at least 10 public meetings. The Parks Recreation and Brutification Committee received six updates and two meetings were held with the Lions Tree Subcommittee. Updates have also been given at two city council meetings. In addition, the city will begin working on a climate action plan this January and we look to working with the Tree Advisor Committee on where and how to enhance our tree canopy. It is extremely sad that this tree was not given the space it needed when it was planted. Because of this, we are forced to make hard decisions to protect our citizens and we need your help to ensure that this does not happen again. So, um, we're going to open the public comment period, so please give your statements to about three minutes. I know that we are here to listen to you on this. Um, we hope to get to all of you, um, because I think we will be able to do that before our public hearing. So, um, with that, let's open up the, uh, public comment period and, uh, the list I have, uh, Devon Grebel.
My name is Devon Grebel. I live in Port Angeles and there are other arborists, ones here tonight, that disagree with what you've said about our tree. I, um, thank you, Mayor Brooks, for postponing cutting our sequoia down. We were relieved and joyous as we hung Christmas ornaments on the tree. There were several people, lots of children playing, and hot herbal tea and apples. It was one of the best Christmas experiences I've ever had. Amazing Christmas tree, so thank you. So, um, okay, at this community meeting that you are scheduling, in order to explain to us the public the city's decision to cut down our sequoia, in turn, we, the people, will explain to you, the city council officials, why, why our sequoia will be protected and preserved as a city historical heritage tree. Now, the headline news today, December 4th, 2018, United Nations chiefs called climate change the most important issue we face. Now, the words "climate change" is a gentle euphemism for atmospheric annihilation. I'll spell it out what that means. D-E-A-T-H. Death. For every creature on this planet it breathes. Now, we do not have to commit global suicide. We can change. And our sequoia, in the way we treat her now, represents that change. Now, is a beat-up driveway and leaky old pipes that can't be repaired more important than an oxygen-creating lovely tree? Of course not. The acronym for save our sequoia is S-O-S. And that is what our planet's environment is crying out. So please, join us in preserving her and saving our sequoia tree.
Thank you.
Linda, it's your turn.
I didn't hear you.
Linda, sorry. Linda, yeah. Showtime.
It gives me no pleasure to say this, but there are a lot of things wrong with downtown PA.
Excuse me, go ahead and move your mic so that people can hear you.
Just double it up. Do we start over?
Yeah. Excuse me, Angela.
I know. It gives me no pleasure to say this, but there are a lot of things wrong with downtown PA. Whatever it is that matters. I'll tell you what's the matter. I live at Lee Plaza in downtown PA. I take early morning walks and I see things most people evidently in PA don't see. I see homeless people digging through the trash cans putting for cigarettes, butts, and food. I see planner boxes that are full of trash and other items like wet clothing and blankets instead of flowers. If there are flowers, they are not being cared for. I see a lot of empty stores. Their windows covered with cardboard. The windows should be covered with nice blinds so the junk inside cannot be seen. Two or three stores have nothing on their windows and there's a lot of junk inside. I see the big window at First Federal that is boarded up. When is it going to be fixed? I see sidewalks that are dirty and covered with leaves which, when wet, are slippery and dangerous. I see people sleeping in the doorway of the old England theater. They're trash and soda cans scattered around them. I see urine coming from their bodies running across this eyeball. I also see piles of human waste on the sidewalk. The area around the theater needs to be power washed periodically. I see a huge dark stain in the carpeting in one of the stores downtown that has been there a long time. I have experienced root and indifferent shopkeepers that totally ignored me in the store. I was the only one in there at the time and the clerk was not on the phone nor did another customer. No, may I help you or thank you for coming in? Nothing. They are now out of business. I wonder why. And now we have a very skinny Christmas tree. Although the lights are pretty, posters from the Arts and Routs Festival are still up. All of these problems are why we shop in Port Angeles. It's a totally different world over there. Clean sidewalks, very friendly shopkeepers, no homeless people to be staying in the downtown area, and only one or two vacant stores. But here, it isn't the homeless people's fault that they own our streets so much. They are required to leave the shelter early in the morning and not return until four or five o'clock. Doesn't matter if they're sick, disabled, or old. There are festivals galore in Port Angeles. Here, we have a festival that celebrates beer drinking and has loud redneck music. Or we can eat overpriced crab in a tent in usually foul weather. And, uh, we are told shopable. Really? When is Port Angeles going to get it together?
Mr. Julius.
In comment.
Okay. Uh, Jasmine Hunt.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Hunt. Uh, before I start, I have one photograph that I took today that I'd like to present to Mayor Brook and for teens. The picture I presented is a picture of Margie Normandin's driveway looking down that alley access. She does not own the property south of that alley. No sign of root damage is seen in that picture to her driveway or house. Her access is down that alley behind our house. We have her big, the tenants' big trucks driving up and down in the alley behind our house all the time. The tree was here, as far as I know, saw in the newspaper, before the houses. Access road next to the tree belongs to the 541 Whidby residents, not to Margie Normandin, and it has been undrivable for years. It is not large enough for a fire truck anyway. Her driveway and alley end, I could turn a Greyhound bus around in. The 541 Whidby resident, Ray Boldby, who lives next to the tree says the water pipe break north of property is from an old cast iron part pipe and not roots of the sequoia, and that was determined by a local plumbing company. He also described his three-year-old daughter being heartbroken at the news of the impending tree destruction. She said it didn't hurt anybody. Why are we hurting it? I don't know why Margie Normandin hates the sequoia so much. Maybe it shakes her house too much in the winter. Maybe she or her tenants can't see the mounds because of it. Does she really think her property value will go up? I don't have a lot of trust in our government to listen to us, unfortunately. Had some bad experiences. You probably prefer not to have to listen to us sometimes. I hear from the newspaper that Mayor Brook plans to schedule a meeting to explain the decision and the process. Guess we heard some of that today. And once again, we will be told not to listen to. I remember being cheated by our city over Lincoln Park. How a public hearing became a public meeting where we were told, where we had no access to the written comments from said meeting for nearly four months, comments that said, "Save the trees." The Lions Park sequoia is special to us and the community. We don't need its loss to be the ultimate Christmas present. It is wrong to hurt many for one's greed. Oh, and, uh... Please don't make the children cry.
Thank you. Lydia Horst.
Well, I'm not an arborist, but tonight I would like to suggest a solution. I have personally spoken to Ray, the renter of the home directly in connection with the dispute of cutting down Hope, our very own Redwood sequoia tree, and I quote, "No structural damage appears to be happening to the home. No walls or ceilings are cracking, no greedy floors and no plumbing problems to speak of ever in the home." I understand, for the, for a tree that has a 20-foot base, the roof would need to be cut 36 feet away. Hope's closest point is seven and a half to 15 feet away. This may seem to pose a problem, but I feel, due to the special circumstances of Hope's exquisite existing root structure, there is no danger of Hope losing its ability as only the ends of the tree roots will be trimmed and cut out. The base of the existing original roots will still be there, undisturbed and ready to regrow. How to accomplish this? First, mark an area and dig a hole all the way around the root until it's completely exposed. Second, use a root saw to prune the root. My suggestion is to prune each root only a couple at a time over some weeks period to allow Hope not to go into shock and regrow and heal as each root is being cut out. Carefully pull the root up away from the tree until it comes out. Immediately refill the vacant area of the root with the stained soil, including large peat gravel, chunks of cement, and possibly a tree root barrier made of cement or the city's choice of barrier to prevent the regrowth of the root in the same spot. Lastly, and most effectively, the renter and the owner of the home in question have both stated they would prefer that the little drive be turned into grass as part of their yard. Also, the drive is their private property and they would confirm the public did not pass through there in the first place. So my final suggestion is to put down sod or grass seeds and allow the owner to put up a fence where he had intended two years ago. I would also like to address the issue with the two leaves at the top of the tree. That unsubstantiated problem can easily be rectified by a technique called cabling. Also, Port Angeles in general does not typically have high winds, so Hope is not likely to be damaged by weather. Please preserve our quality.
John Williams for it.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have a letter that I wrote and I can't read the entire thing tonight, but I'd like to give to you. So, I am an arborist and I'm one of the, uh, the most reputed arborists in western Washington. Um, I've looked at the sequoia before. And that's, let me restart. I'm one of those in public speaking. Uh, so, this tree obviously is resonating with the community in some ways. I'm engaged by city council members and city managers across central and west, western Washington to, to work with tree management. This tree has not really been looked at closely or presented with a management plan of any kind of sort. I would be happy to write an assignment and scope for the city that requests a, another consultant, not myself, to develop a management plan on the tree which doesn't just assign it a risk, you know? It is identified as a higher risk from another arborist that I recommended, the Parks Director used. There's other options. There's things to look at, you know? No one has really, uh, investigated different options for tree protection or management, or what those, what those actually mean. The other option is, I think we're in a pretty unique opportunity here because, uh, the Parks Director has bid $2,200. If the tree has to go away, the director in the original RP, uh, budgeted $12,000. Uh, that leaves about, what? Nine and a half thousand left over from that. Um, if we could use that money to reinstall other trees to make that a food forest or an evergreen park, to re-invest that into our urban forest equity, that could be a, you know, an equitable and meaningful solution to everybody here. And I urge you to read the rest of the letter. Thank you.
Elizabeth Dunn.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Dunn. First, I want to thank everyone who helped get the city to postpone the cutting down of Port Angeles's largest sequoia tree. And I want to thank the city for listening. I'm here to talk to you about why I'm very concerned about the city's decision to cut down the sequoia tree in Lions Park. I'm an environmental and community rights attorney. I found this issue worthy of my time. As, most importantly, of all of your constituents who have taken the time to visit the sequoia tree, write an email, give you a call, sign a petition, and show that they care. It's worth caring. I'm going to start with the bigger picture and then get to some specifics. The 70-plus-year-old sequoia tree is not, quote, "a problem." While I appreciate the idea that some trees are better for the urban tree canopy than others, when you are given a gift, you don't get to choose exactly what it looks like. The sequoia tree provides many ecosystem benefits. Oxygen, carbon sequestration, sucking up the groundwater that would otherwise make the area very wet and swampy, bird and bee wildlife habitat, a place for adults and children to play, and most recently, a living Christmas tree and community gathering spot. We need to stop with the notion that we must always control nature, that it is ours to dominate and destroy just because it is not exactly how we would like it or it is perceived as just too inconvenient to accommodate. We are in a climate crisis and tearing us down this tree, treating this tree as disposable is symbolic of our inability to see the dramatic shifts that must be made to mitigate climate change on a larger scale. It also speaks to how the city is using its limited budget. The sequoia tree was the right tree in the right place when it was planted and when it grew. The neighboring house was moved to that location in the 90s. Now, I heard some statements by the mayor at the beginning. I'm going to try to correct some of those inaccuracies in those statements, one of which is actually that the house, while built in the 1940s, was moved to that location in the 1990s. How do I know that? Because I own one of the houses on Whidby Avenue. They're all very similar. They were all moved to that location later. So the tree existed there first before that neighboring house. Now, we need to respect nature. I'm not saying this has absolutely been all costs whatsoever, but that's a debate we don't need to get into here because that's not true in this case. It seems pretty clear that we can happily coexist with the sequoia. At the very least, it's clear that we haven't tried. We haven't given it our best efforts. This brings me to a few specifics of the situation and I don't know if I'll have time to address all of them here. Um, I've heard the city express concerns that there's been misinformation being spread about the circumstances surrounding the removal of the sequoia tree. Because I think that many of you care about getting it right, I think that the only way this statement could be made is that you haven't had the chance or the time to understand the whole situation. And I know you're all very busy and I'm going to ask if I might have a bit more time because, to address some of these specifics as to the myths and the solutions that I have been hearing.
So, um, before I can, we can allow that, let's get everybody else who signed up to speak and then there's, if we run out of time because we do have a public hearing at 6:30 and we can also do it at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we can do that. Thank you.
So, Steve Hopkins.
Good evening, I'm Steve Hopkins, the operations and planning manager for Calum Transit. Uh, just wanted to relate a story. I was on an outbound bus on last Friday that had people with all sorts of shopping bags and moving to make seats for, for other people who had shopping bags that were carrying them out of Port Angeles. That means people are coming into Port Angeles on the bus, doing their shopping downtown and perhaps returning home somewhere else. So, um, I'm thrilled to see people using transit to, to support our downtown businesses as well. Uh, we've continued October's positive trend in ridership growth. Um, that was 11% in October, a 7% increase in November over last year. So we're really pleased with those ridership trends. Uh, one of our riders in November was Santa Claus that had downed to the, the tree lighting last week. So we were thrilled to support that effort as well. And, uh, we are continuing our comprehensive planning process. We've been out in the three cities that we serve and in the past two weeks. We're also now out of three tribal centers this week and next week. Our comprehensive plan draft is on our website, calumtransit.com and people are more than welcome to, to give us a call at the office or stop by one of our public events to provide their comments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do and that's wonderful. So, that is the last on the list. If, um, I'll have to get the other list to come out soon. We got two more votes, so, um, are they free, Freeland?
Bob Freeland, 520 East 10th Street, Port Angeles, Washington. Well, it's been an interesting last couple of months, hasn't it? When the International Panel on Climate Change came out with their report, very little fanfare. Not much reporting about it. And then the US government came out with their report and we get a little more reporting. And then, just the last two days, we've had some more information from the PDN. Now, many of you probably missed this one. The Whale Songs War and Whale Songs War and less talked about climate impacts, what the military refers to as multiplier effect. You missed it. It's on the back of the sports section on Monday's paper. Probably why you missed it. And then this one was already mentioned in today's paper. But also, there's a couple of editorials on the back. I encourage you to read both of them because both, uh, Pat Buchanan has some interesting points. Although, when are we going to start paying for what we need to do for climate change? And then, Paul Krugman, Krugman has an interesting editorial. So, it's been difficult for me. Eight to 10 years ago, I was projecting that the US public and maybe the world public would start to get rather interested in climate change about 2020. And here we are, close to 2020, and it appears that we are having that happen. And also, the report from the United States government says, "We better get busy quick because by 2030, we're going to be in real trouble if we don't." And that was my drop-dead date. And that's literally not figuratively for when we needed to have some major impacts to reduce climate change or it was going to be really difficult for future generations. Now, those changes that I, that we can have are in this book, Drawdown. Mayor Brook has a copy of that and she's been able to share it with other council members. And interestingly enough, of the hint 100 things that we should be doing now, one of them that's not in there is carbon pricing. And I found that really interesting. Now, these are not new technologies. Some of these have been around for over 100 years. The Olympic Climate Action Group works, well, we're doing, working with you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, what's that? Port Angeles. So, there was a 2011 canopy assessment of our city. Um, at that time, we had 27.3% coverage. The study recommended that we increase it to 48% or we could. You talk about being Tree City USA. September 2016, the PDN headlines screamed, "Port Angeles to replace Peabody Trees. This urgent trip hazard on the sidewalk will be replaced by 2017." And we'll replant new trees. Really? Uh, in the 1980s, there was a lot of talk around here of cutting every single tree in Lincoln Park. In 2011, this was subject came up again, a lot, at council meetings. 2,100 signatures were collected to save our trees. The late Mayor DeGiulio, in June 2011, said, "I encourage everyone here interested in saving these trees to go to the public hearing and express your feelings." 2011, the city says removed trees will be replaced. 2011, Port gets $150,000 grant. Port pays $145,000 to a Seattle landscape firm. Port will pay for all upgrades and replacing. 2014, a pact to cut 400 trees in Lincoln Park. 2017, the port allocates $250,000 to remove 77 trees from the 1,000 cited a few months earlier. The FAA says cut, top, or put lights on the trees. Lights? Only Sissy commented on this at a council meeting. February 3rd, 2017,
February 3, 2017, parks director Delicat says that he expects the downed trees will be sold and the proceeds deposited into the Lincoln Park Improvement Fund. July 2017, at staff urging, the city council unanimously agreed to convert the Lincoln Park Tree Fund to the City Park Improvement Fund with ordinance 3585, which made the money for all parks. So much for replanting anything. Clearly, all tree cutting is now a money grab for Parks and Rec. I see the urgency to cut the sequoia now. Thanks.
All the folks who have signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to council? Please step up, state your name, and whether you live in the city or not.
Good evening, council. My name is Jane Vanderhoof, and I live at 114 West 2nd Street. I also own a farm with my husband Peter in Joyce. It's a 56-acre farm. And in 2015, we chose to devalue our farm by half because we put it in a conservation easement with the North Olympic Land Trust. The appraiser, the pre-appraiser, their pre-appraisal was like around $1 million. And then when we gave up all the development rights and selling the timber rights, we lost $500,000 worth of value. And we chose to do that because we care about a lot of things which has already been spoken about tonight. The climate and trees and carbon sequestration, and also beautiful places that are beneficial for humans and other life creatures. So I just, within the last week, got involved with the tree issue at Lyons Park and became a part of that. Let's see, what was I going to say? I was going to say that I don't believe we should cut that tree down. And my husband, who was not involved in this, also agrees that we shouldn't cut that tree down because it would cost much less to use stainless steel bolts to put the two trunks that have split apart about halfway up the tree together. And that would solve that problem. It is a really very healthy tree otherwise. And he also said that the real problem, it would be very easy to just deal with that with the house that's right next to it. So it doesn't seem like real reasons, they seem very spurious, why one person who apparently lives in Squam would want to cut this tree down because of her property, and it might be the view. And the tree isn't even affecting her property. So I would really like to save this tree because I just gave up, you know, $500,000 of value on my property by choice to save all kinds of trees so that hopefully one day. I live in an area in Joyce where 150 years ago, it was the greatest red cedar stand in probably the world. And they even had a railroad trestle coming onto my property, taking all these big, huge trees out. And so I kind of have this dream to have it look like that again in somebody's lifetime, not mine. So I would like you to just save this tree. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak to council? All right, seeing no one, we will move forward to, okay, one last comment, and then we'll move on to another comment. Oh, wait a second. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if you meant.
No, there'll be the second public comment.
Second public comment.
Okay. So yeah, everybody, yeah. All right, so it is 6:30. So we will move on to the, let's just, so let's move on to the public hearing, and then we'll come back to the conservative. So the 2019 budget public hearing discussion.
Madam Mayor, Council, like your last meeting, we did present you with a balanced budget for 2019. A detailed presentation was done at that time. And this evening, the goal is to conduct a continued public hearing from that meeting. And we are asking council to finalize and adopt the budget this evening by adopting the budget ordinance. Steph would be happy to answer any additional questions related to the budget.
All right, so let me, we'll need to open this public hearing. Let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the 2019 budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019. So the, it's open. Are there any discussion from the, from either council or the public regarding this budget? All right, folks.
In lieu of a public comment, I would just like to make a comment to Serena on the Exhibit A of the, on Page 7 of the program. I greatly appreciate this information. This is what I was looking for when we talked about other miscellaneous and those type of things. This detailed information was extremely helpful to me, and I think it makes this document extremely transparent as opposed to just having categories of different expenditures and revenues. And so this, this, and we're not, I added them all up, and they did, they do balance. So I know, I got to get a life, really. But anyway, I did find this page, Exhibit A, very helpful. And this is the type of information I think the public would be very grateful to have because it does add transparency to our budget in the sense that we don't lump things into other miscellaneous categories. So again, I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
I really appreciate Jim's remarks, and thank you. I agree. I've just been fighting miscellaneous and other for years and trying to figure out what it was. This is very helpful. And the fact that you actually, Councilmember Rand, added it up, I'm going to request help, help with my checkbook. Thanks for that. Good for you. But thank you, Serena. It's, it's, this is a huge task. I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Anybody in the audience who would like to comment about the budget? I'm seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, sorry. Evening, Council. I am a majority of the 617th South Beach. I've heard before, and I think it's been five years when I put in and asked about getting busy on a climate action plan, and I hope you will. Usually in a budget, it often gives some direction on where a local government is going to go, how verbatim they spend their money. I made a quick review. I don't see much about climate change. So I'm hoping there's some other ways the council will get busy with that. As I stated before, you know, we had some residual money from a NASA grant, and we funded a study of wildfire in the interface area up in our foothills and principally down near Squam. But we were fifth highest county in western states for catastrophic loss by wildfire. As you know, when the state was imposing the water rule in the East End, there was some concern even here of the L law because of the water shortage projections. When Washington Seagrant, coastal resiliency expert, has over the last four years looked at sea level rise risks, we come out with figures like 2025, 2030, '35. There may be areas like Free Crabs, Jamestown Beach, Squam Bay that may not be buildable because of sea level rise, particularly when you have stacking or winter storm inundation along with normal tidal activity. If any of you walked at Eddes Hook Beach a week ago, you would see a very unusual, even though it was very calm the days when the king tides were there, but it was very eerie. I went down to Squam Bay, Discovery Bay, Fort Townsend, or some other things, but I made it a point for an hour earlier to walk through beaches. And it was just eerie to see very high tides. So if you look at the projections in that two-county study which Port Angeles participated in, $163,000 study, sea level rise was a big concern. So things are happening, and I'm hoping you've looked at, or had a chance at least, to look for relevant sections of the latest IPCC report, the fourth of the national assessments. And then if you could review some of the litigation that's happening in Colorado, California, and other areas where they're suing the major oil companies because, again, their own internal documents show that they knew fossil fuels were going to be causing a lot of these impacts. They didn't warn the public, the government, who knew some of this, with Jim Hansen and others testifying to Congress. But nobody took it seriously. Well, now we know, and people aren't doing much about it. So I am hoping you would do something about a climate action plan and then use some strategies like electrifying your fleet, put solar, upgrade city lights, with a higher proportion of renewables. Do some strategies that would start to bend the curve on climate change. Thanks.
And just as a reminder, we are going to be starting that climate action plan in January. All right. Anybody else who would like to comment on the budget? Please go to the mic and state your name, and whether you live in the city.
Robert Slusky, 2nd, Port Angeles. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I do have a question. There have been several articles, I believe in September, about Port Angeles creates code enforcement fund. One of the councils, by Cherie Kidd, was this very important. It's long overdue. I had a meeting with some city staff yesterday, and I was told that there will be no code enforcement funding for 2019 in the present budget. And as far as I know, there's no funding for it in existence right now. My question for the city council is, one of the basic functions of the city is to protect its assets, its citizens, its appearance, and its laws. And I've been involved with a neighbor who, for three years, has dozens, if not hundreds, of accumulated misdemeanor zoning and nuisance violations. And all I hear repeatedly from every branch of the city government is, "We don't have the money to do anything." And I have to leave it at that because that seems to be the steadfast answer.
Well, we're hoping that, yeah, Mr. Bush will.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'd be happy to address that.
I'm David Nathan. Sorry.
Madam Mayor, Council, we have to address that. The speaker is correct in that we do not have code compliance in the budget for 2019 at this point in time. If we, if you saw our presentation at the last council meeting, as well as some of the prior council meetings, we did release the budget on October 12 of this year. And it took a great deal of work to put together a balanced budget. We were substantially out a significant gap to essentially fill between the difference of expenditures and revenues for 2019. And there simply wasn't money available there to implement a new code compliance program. It's extremely important that when we implement a new program, that we can sustain it. It's one that we can support for years to come and not just put some one-time funding towards it and have it only last one year. Staff's commitment to council is that we will be bringing forward some revenue options to city council to consider implementing that hopefully could provide some additional funding to ensure that we have code compliance, and hopefully starting in 2019. But at this point, it's not a balanced budget, but I will take it as something that we're working hard on, and we're getting creative with findings and new revenue thresholds.
Thank you for that. All right, anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to council regarding the budget? Specifically the budget. All right, seeing none. We'll now close the public hearing on the budget. And council, how would you like to move on? So I write the, okay. Again, it's, the ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the 2019 budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2019.
I move that we adopt the ordinance. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, passes your name and this name. So we will go to ordinance, not required, public. So the 2019 budget amendment number three. What's the amendment section?
Good evening. Today we have a third and final amendment to the 2018 budget. Amendment is primary price of units of project spending, some grant-funded items, and then some in the year cleanup. And all of those items are detailed in the attachment to your notice. There's also in Exhibit A, the ordinance, there's a revenue expenditure summary as well as projected in the year fund balance. Of note there is that we are meeting the general fund at 25%. So with that, are there any more questions? Do you have any other?
All right, so council, any questions regarding this budget amendment?
I would just like to point out, since she does a wonderful job to Little Soft Spoken, I just want to reiterate that our, our general fund, our reserves are over 25%, which is a feather in the cap for the city because in an emergency, we have the funding to continue to run the city until, I mean, we don't know, whether emergency, whatever. And that's so important. And when I would first sat on this council, as a new council member, we were only 10% reserves. And I am just, we have a balanced budget, and we have 25% reserves. I applaud the staff. Great job. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other comments from?
I just was going to note, particularly because code compliance is part of, that I was, I'm pleased to see the transfer for the player properties funding so that while that's not code compliance, it is one tool we have that will allow us to move forward with some projects that we need to do. So thank you.
All right. All right, well, let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, commending the 2018 budget and funds. And so this opens up the, I guess, the hearing for the budget amendment. Are there anybody in, is there anybody in the audience?
Madam, this isn't a public hearing.
Not here. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
And it's just the first reading of the ordinance?
It is. Okay, so just the first reading of the ordinance. So we will continue this to the December 18 council meeting. So on to the complete streets ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. City staff are in ordinance to adopt city, Port Angeles Complete Streets policy, stating guiding principles and practices for the transportation improvements are planned, designed, and constructed to improve walking, bicycle, and transit use for moving safe operations for all users. The ordinance is time-sensitive, meaning Washington State Department of Transportation Improvement Board awards deadline of December 14, 2019. The complete street ordinance makes city Port Angeles eligible for grant funding at $1 million. Currently, the city has dedicated a complete streets approach for two print store tutorials using the complete streets guiding principles. This new funding source is different from other grant programs. The complete streets award discussed money to the city or county in Washington State who has adopted a complete street ordinance. Therefore, staff is working on the city council, conduct the first reading, waive the second reading, and adopt the ordinance. At this point, I would have questions or comments?
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
I just want to say thank you for getting this done in a timely manner so that we can submit. I know we've been talking about it for a while. It has come up before. And I appreciate that there are already projects that have been planned or in the kind of phase that incorporate these, I can't say the word right now, what we're talking about.
Anybody else?
I too would like to thank staff for this because this is very important for us, especially for the grant funding. And the waiting of the second reading will be so that we can get this in on time. So I think that's a really valuable thing to do.
I just agree that this is terrific for our city, for all our citizens, and the staff really hustled to get this done for tonight. So thank you, and we'll all benefit from this. So thank you, and we'll all benefit from this.
Just to add, this is where the rubber meets the road on a lot of the issues that people talked about earlier today in the public comment because this helps to create more multimodal transportation and solve a lot of transportation issues which are, I think, the heart of our greenhouse gas emissions here in Port Angeles. So thanks for bringing this forward and I hope that we're successful in the nomination process. Thank you.
And, you know, I would like to kind of tag on to that. I think that this is, I'm going to support this. I think the way the second reading is reasonable. I'm really excited that we're able to get in for that next year of the TIB grant process. You know, one of the guiding principles, they talk about landscaping, and that's something where I'm not interested in changing any of the ordinance as it's written now, but in the future, I would really like us to think harder about the public's work standards and how we, when we're creating streets, when we're redesigning or whatever we're doing, is to be taking landscaping seriously and taking, if we're talking about being a tree city, planting trees in medians on streets so that we actually have guidelines and so we actually follow them. Because that's something that concerns me is, this has flexibility written into it and I think that's reasonable, but when we write guidelines like these, they're only as good as our commitment to those guidelines. So, you know, I certainly want us to have complete streets. I certainly want us to have flexibility so we're not bankrupting our city to create complete streets. I do think that, you know, the multimodal transportation issues are definitely the biggest part of that, but landscaping is a part of that as well. And that creates neighborhoods that people want to live in, that people feel a sense of community in, they feel a sense of identity in. And so I think that that's an important part of that as well.
Any other comments? All right, let me, so first, we'll connect the first reading. It goes with some ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the complete streets policy and program. So council, I want to make some remarks.
I move to ask you separate questions? I move to wave the second reading of this ordinance.
Second. All right, any discussion on waiting the second reading? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I move to adopt the ordinance, adopting complete streets program and policy.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Both of those pass unanimously. Thank you.
Council, thank you very much for that. I want to express appreciation to the Public Works Department, the Legal Department, and the Community and Economic Development Department to help make that a very efficient ordinance and get that moved forward. And I do very much appreciate that this also creates an expectation and that we have a more thorough approach to street development, including multimodal access, but also landscaping. And certainly, we do have in existence a street policy. And it's really important that we utilize this complete street policy to ensure that we're also implementing adequate landscaping and trees along the way.
Just want to add one more point on this. The Transportation Improvement Board doesn't expect that a complete streets policy means that there's a sidewalk on every single street. That part of their understanding is that every street needs to be looked at within its context. In some streets, people may feel uncomfortable and actually reasonably safe walking down the side of the street, even outside of parked cars. So this doesn't necessarily mean that every single street is sidewalks, bike lanes, transit going out. I mean, that's not what this means in terms of the common talk bankrupting the city or trying to complete streets. It's about looking within the context and thinking about different ways that people move in the city.
So council, I'm hoping that you guys will be okay. If we skip directly to other considerations, we have folks here and we've got presentations happening. Maybe we can come back to the agenda. Is that okay? Yeah? All right. Okay, so we will move directly to the first presentation, the Olympic Peninsula Narcotics Enforcement Team.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you about something that we don't normally come to talk to you about. You know, we're very excited often to talk to you about our outreach programs and our community policing and some of the other things we do, but it's important for us to talk about some of the other things that the police department does in working with their agencies that help us leverage our limited resources and, you know, work on problems that are beyond our capacity a lot of times and meet expectations of the public. But to tell that story, I've got Detective Sergeant Tom Cook with the Port Angeles Police Department standing behind me and Detective Mike Rall from Washington State Patrol. And those two fine gentlemen are going to talk to you about what they do and maybe take some questions and give you some of our hearing recorded in person. So thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Mike Rall. I'm a detective with the Washington State Patrol. I've been with the patrol for 30 years and been in Port Angeles for all 30 years of that career. Just wanted to give a little bit of background of who is this guy talking to you at. Sergeant Cook and I did not coordinate or call each other before we came as far as blue shirt, blue tie combination. So I'm sure that that's on the record, on video and everything else. The reason we're here is to talk to the council department heads and those citizens that are here about OABNET. What is OABNET? Who are we? What do we do? We're going to be as brief as possible, but we could probably fill a whole session if you ever want to have us back. There'll be a lot of questions and stuff. So please feel free to talk to Chief Smith about having us come back for more information. So I'm going to basically tell you a little bit about OABNET, which is Olympic Peninsula Narcotics Enforcement Team. In my 30-year career in the patrol, I've been fortunate to be in OABNET or our local drug task force for the last 19 years. And that's a unique situation with my agency that does not rotate our detectives if they choose to stay. And so that's why I'm here and hopefully will stay for many more years to come. I'm a hometown kid. I've been here my whole life. And so it's great for me to be able to serve the community in this way. So basically, OABNET is a multi-agency narcotics task force. Our primary mission is to focus on narcotic-related crimes. But there's a lot more to it than that, which Sergeant Cook and myself will learn a little bit later. So OABNET is comprised like any other task force across the state. In the state of Washington, there are 20-some of these types of task forces. They are made up in regions of agencies that are in that area. And so for our task force here in Port Angeles, where, how is that in Port Angeles? And we're in Clowen County. We have, the Clowen County Sheriff's Office is our host agency, which is responsible for some of the grant paperwork, which is, the grant is, the federal grant is, it's gone away. I'm sure you've heard some rumors about that. They handle all the paperwork. We use all of their forms and evidence facilities. They also provide a commanding officer, clerical staff, and analyst in our unit. The Washington State Patrol provides a detective, City of Port Angeles provides Sergeant Tom Cook. The Orange Patrol supplies an agent for us to live. They provide us with free housing, basically, so we don't have to pay rent. They house us at their station. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Homeland Security Investigations supplies a detective, as does the City of Squim, and the Clowen County Sheriff's Office provides a detective. So that's the agencies that make up our group. We have four working detectives, sergeant, plus support staff. So it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's a relatively small unit to work narcotics, unfortunately. Before I go into too much detail about what we do specifically narcotics, I'll say this, that narcotics-related crime is, touches all other crime for the most part that occurs in some way, shape, or form, either directly or indirectly. And so we focus on narcotics. That's our mission statement, to identify controlled substances, that people are using them, importing them into our country, transporting them, selling them, manufacturing them. And as you would expect, the criminal culture does not recognize any type of jurisdictional boundary, be it city of Port Angeles, county, state, or country. So we are of Port County. We are right on the street of one of you good Canada, our neighbor to the north. There are a lot of things that come back and forth there, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the cases we've worked there. Most of our drugs, obviously, that come into our community are coming from the southern border of Central America up through the United States and all over. So our primary mission is to work narcotics and work into the culture, if you will. The illicit culture, like any other corporate structure or entity that exists, there's always the top of the realm and then there's the very bottom. And so through this structure, we try to infiltrate that criminal underworld wherever we can get in, and it's all about access to that. Even though Detective Sergeant Cook and I have beards and we are plainclothes undercover detectives that drive plain cars, soccer mom vans, if you will, and we blend into the community fairly well, even though I've been here my entire life, more people know me than I know them. So half of my friends don't know if I'm working or not when I run into them somewhere in town. And if they, if I am, then I just avoid them and they figure it out. But we are a covert undercover unit, and that's what one of our specialty things that we'll highlight a little bit later. Once we get into that culture, inside the drug culture, we root around and try to take out as much of the organization as we can and we've identified. How does this happen? Information. Information comes to from us from a variety of sources. Citizens on the street who are complaining about a house next door that they suspect is a drug house. Information from other law enforcement officers on the rest that they make. Neighboring law enforcement agencies that have crimes going on. Some of their people are migratory and move from county to county or city to city. And then through informants that we develop through the criminal underworld. If you're going to go fishing and you need to use the right type of bait to catch a fish, in the criminal underworld, the only way that we're going to infiltrate criminal organizations such as narcotics organizations is through other people that are involved in crime. As nice as we might look tonight, which I'm not afraid to say, we don't fit the mold to go to any type of house that sells narcotics and just request to buy what they're selling. It's a very closely guarded, unique culture. So we need and regularly use people involved in the criminal underworld to get to other criminals and other criminal organizations. And once we are inside that organization, we try to move up the ladder to the highest possible source that we can get our hands on to make cases and remove them from that culture and aggressively prosecute them. So we have to work with a lot of people. Last thing before Sergeant Cook goes over some of our accomplishments in the last year is that when we get inside that culture and we identify through people that give us information about who's selling drugs or who's importing them into our county or where our drug dealers here in this county go out of county to get their drugs. Once we start moving up the ladder, and it's not very far, a couple steps, we are dealing with people that are outside of our county and into other cities and neighboring counties, and then eventually into other states, which eventually goes into other countries. And we've worked cases all the way from Port Angeles, Washington, or Clowen County, all the way to Canada and all the way to Mexico and several states in between. So that's our goal, that's our mission, that's who we're comprised of, and that's what we do on a day-to-day basis. There's a lot of more specialized things that we do. As Chief Smith spoke too, we are a resource magnifier, which we'll get into a little bit more. But I'll let Sergeant Cook tell you a little bit about some of our accomplishments this last year.
Hi, thanks for having us. When I told Mike that we were going to have to dress up for tonight, I was worried that he's going to show up dressed like Lieutenant Tango from Rainbow Man on the morning. Unfortunately, he wore a suit and tie and shit. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights we have this year so our stats go, some of the arrests we made. Mike's been talking a lot about the drug rules in which we work every day. And I want to point out and help you understand that we're more than just a drug unit. We are here to help other agencies in the city with whatever case happens to come along. And here's some examples of that. Just in this year, we've made or assisted in 49 different arrests. The earliest one in the year was Dennis Fisher in Forks. He went federal. The FBI was interested in him, so we were working with the FBI on that. Some of the other cases that we've worked, there was a vehicle probably resisting arrest. We assisted city with that. We assisted with a theft of a motor vehicle. An interesting case we had earlier in the year was threats to bomb. There was a gentleman that was making threats, mailing threats actually, to bomb different places in town. We helped him do that. Did we take the lead on that?
No.
We ended up taking the lead on that. And we figured out who it was and made an arrest of that case. We assisted city with custody of an appearance in the first degree, lots of possession and delivery cases. An interesting case that we had early in the year, which I'll highlight in a minute, had to do with Nicholas Orozco Cruz. He's a Westin resident. And he was using somebody he knew here in Port Angeles to come to Port Angeles and make his deals. He would do deals in their house. So although these people weren't drug dealers, they knew what he was doing, and so they got arrested for unlawful use of a building for drug purposes. We helped county with an assault first degree and obstructing. That case was, there was a man up, I think it was Deer Park or Blue Mountain, and he was shooting at his resident, one of his neighbors. Everybody in the world that's in law enforcement responded to assist. We went up there and we ended up taking custody of him and taking him to the hospital and getting him booked later on. We helped with a DUI loot case. We helped with a driving suspended case, possession of stolen property. Sometimes when we do our investigations and we go to effect a raid on a house, not just the drug dealer gets arrested, but there's other people there that have warrants, so we arrest people on that. Early in the year, we helped Jefferson County with what they called the Net Nanny case. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But Net Nanny was a sting set up by the Washington State Patrol in Jefferson County in which pedophiles would try and make arrangements to hook up with droogles. We helped with surveillance on that case and tailing them around until they went to the house where it was supposed to happen. In that case, we helped out with nine different arrests. So far this year, there's not much of it left, so, but hopefully we'll get some more before the end of the year. We've seized six and a half pounds of marijuana, which sounds weird because marijuana is legal now, but only if you possess a certain amount under a certain amount. When you possess over a certain amount, it becomes illegal. And when we were affecting a lot the other day, this guy had six and a half pounds of marijuana. So we seized that. We seized 406 grams of heroin, 194 grams of methamphetamine, 343 units of diverted opioids. What that means is a unit could be a Suboxone strip, which people help, use to help with heroin withdrawal. That's also a drug abuse. And so some people prefer to use that rather than opioids. It could be pills. Pills aren't as popular as they used to be, but they are now, I mean, pills are still around. They're just not as fluent as they used to be. All these drugs that we've seized have a street value of $58,671, which we are told from last year, pretty high above that. Some of our more notable guilty dispositions we've had this year. At the beginning of the year, we got Gerald Walker for possession with intent and unlawful possession of a firearm. He was prosecuted federally and he's doing 140 months federal prison. We helped the city with a child molestation case, and he's been arrested and sentenced to 70 months in prison. Recently, we learned of a case where there were some gang members in prison trying to get drugs into the prison. We worked with the prison on that, and two arrests came out of that. Both were convicted, methamphetamine charges. One was sent to 72 months and the other one got what they call a residosa. And so he doesn't have to go to prison. He's going to be under DLC supervision and go through a drug treatment program. And most recently, Jessica Crisman and Elizabeth McKean have both pled guilty in federal court to delivery of heroin and methamphetamine. These names are of interest because they're attached to Orozco Cruz, the Westin resident I was telling you about. Nicholas Orozco Cruz, his moniker was Nico. Some people would call him the Mexican. And there was always rumors about him. He was a dealer for a long time, 20 years in our community, dealing heroin, methamphetamine, cocaine, most recently heroin. So hearing all these rumors all the time, we try and develop background information on them. We try to get as much info as we can. In doing this, we got several different people telling us in different situations the same thing about him. So then we determined that was pretty reliable information. Using that, we developed some informants that gave us more better information, and that led to us working with a confidential informant. Confidential informant introduced the DEA to some of Nico's dealers. The DEA bought drugs from those dealers, and we watched as Nico made deliveries to these other people. So after about a year-long investigation, we wrapped it up with the DEA arresting Jessica Crisman, Elizabeth McKean, and Nico Orozco Cruz. That's one example of how we collaborate with other agencies. Although the DEA isn't our partner in OABNET, they are a partner in fighting drugs. And so we'll hook up with anybody... And so we'll hook up with anybody that wants to help us fight drugs. We don't just keep it exclusive to the OPNET folks, we partner with everybody. Um, and in doing so, that makes us a great force multiplier, we're paying for your buck. And uh, so another, another case that I wanna talk about real quick before I give Mike back to Mike, um, was the DOC case. Very interesting case. Um, in the case with Nico, uh, that was your typical drawn-out long investigation where it starts with information and then informants and then confidential informants and then buys and then the raid and then the arrest and prison. That's the typical uh, drug investigation. The prison one, we just heard about this and we had a very short timeline to work with. Um, working with prison investigators, uh, we were able to convince these gang members, MS thirteen and the BGEs uh, to bring the drugs to Port Angeles out on Edith Hook. And the plan was to, to get them as they were doing that. Um, in communications with them, we, we were trying to figure out how did they want us to introduce, when I mean us, I mean our confidential informant. Um, how did they want us to introduce the drugs to the prison? Um, and they decided they would wrap them up in tight little pop lugs and he'd take them as his lunch. Um, because apparently nobody could see their lunch check. Um, so they were on the town. Uh, the informant didn't wanna meet with them, so they agreed to find our car on Edith Hook, leave it, lock the door and leave. And then when that happened, we moved in and took them to custody without incident. Um, I'm pretty proud of this because I had a lot of collaboration, I had a lot of partners in this. I think when, when the bust went down, I think we had thirty to thirty-five agents working it. Um, and it was the OPNET gang and uh, and also um, sheriff's detectives, Port Angeles detectives, SWIN detectives, Border Patrol, HSI, Coast Guard and US Air and Marine. The cool thing about US Air and Marine is they were at thirty thousand feet and they had um, night vision cameras showing us, do the deal and take them down. So that's just one example of the collaboration and cooperation we give with all the other agencies around here. Thank you.
Uh, Sergeant Cook said, and said often about a force multiplier. We, I think it's important that the, the council and the department heads and our citizens here in Port Angeles know that the City of Portland Police Department, as you all know, is a small department, as are our other agencies here in SWIN, Clough County Sheriff, are all small departments. Even the State Patrol detachment here is a small unit. So the great thing about OPNET is that we are extremely uh, unique skillset that we have, highly specialized in a lot of areas, since we don't have most time, we can't go into all of them. We are constantly trained and, but not only does OPNET Task Force provide investigative assistance at any level a department needs at, at any type of case. As Detective Sergeant Cook noted, all of the different cases that we are involved in, from simple driving offenses because there was other nexus to other crimes. This was a known felon that's been involved with stolen, stolen guns. We recovered a stolen gun from that suspended driver with search warrants. We, he's a known drug uh, abuser and drug distributor, so there's a lot more on legs. It wasn't just a driving offense. So all, at any time, our task force is fully deployed to assist all of the agencies on the peninsula at any time that they need us because of our special skillset. So not only do we bring our task force to help the smaller agencies, but we bring a contingency of other partners clear across our nation and state, federal, local partners if necessary. And we have those contacts, we are social contact experts, we are networking crazy moguls in that term. We are networking constantly and never ends, so we can bring the army with us to help any agency at any time. Um, so we are a force multiplier, we are a limited resource multiplier. When they need us patrol, officers are running from call to call to call. Um, they, they don't have, they have very limited time given every course. Detective units are extremely small, their caseload is ridiculously heavy. Those detective units with the City of SWIN, Port Angeles and, and Clough County are smaller, are smaller than us. So we are regularly assisting those other agencies. Every week, we're assisting one of these agencies to some degree. Um, so we are focusing on narcotics, but we solve, helps solve a lot of burglaries. We assist in rape, robbery, homicide. If there's a crime that you can mention today, we can help and bring our unit to do that and provide a lot of assistance. So some of the other things that we can do, um, a quick list, tactical assistance. We have a tactical team that trains regularly. Um, and we help those agencies on high-risk situations and as beyond our skillset, we have the resources to call in, but we're better than us. We can take over cases at any time, once it gets to a level where patrol officers don't have time, we can take it from them at that point, free up those patrol officers to go and handle those cases and take it further out of county, out of state, out of country. So we also provide expert testimony um, in court, regularly called upon to provide that. We actually provide consultation with the prosecutor's office on drug cases. It doesn't have to be one of ours, it could be a city patrol officer case and we will provide prosecutorial assistance and guidance. We have long-term detectives that are very skilled in this, in this arena. We train at the academy, Police Academy, all the younger officers that are coming through. We also train all our local officers on things that are going on that we have a skillset, whether it be report writing, search warrants, wire orders, technical improvement, investigative assistance, we do it. So the great thing that you're learning is that you have an amazing asset at your disposal, as does the other cities and agencies in the county, when needed. And that means Department of Corrections, the prisons and so forth. There's nobody that we're not gonna stop, but we're gonna go help. And so the City of Port Angeles has been in that task force as long as I've been there, for the last nineteen years. We get reforms as detectives um, and as supervisors now. So that's all the information that we have for you unless you wanna enter any questions beyond our allotted time. Yes?
Mr. Groll, thank you for the presentation, it's excellent and I, I'm so grateful for OPNET. I'm just so grateful, without it, we'd be overrun with, with drug dealers. Um, my, my concern is reading the report in um, in our packet, it says that your funding overview, that you've been supported through a Washington Department of Commerce grant that is a pass-through for the US Department of Justice firm JAG grant. As of two thousand and eighteen, this funding has been suspended. Task forces statewide are working toward funding relief from the state legislature in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty session. What can we do as council, as citizens, um, who want a safe community? What can we do to help um, the cause of restoring this funding? Because OPNET clearly is a very strong force for good in our community.
Um, so that's a great question and that's probably a more extensive conversation, but I'll take on uh, that as much as I can. We've been engaging with our congressional members, Catwell specifically, Senator Catwell and her staff. Um, and it's a long story on how the federal funding is no longer available to us, but we have uh, Washington Association of Sheriff's and Chiefs um, working with the governor and the legislature on um, restoring that funding. Um, it's definitely a challenge. Um, just asking what you can do, um, I think we're gonna be advocating through our local representatives. There is a, an active effort right now to restore that funding through the legislature, but it's one of the many challenges we face. I don't see local governments, this isn't an ask for replacement from local governments. This is an external source, DOJ and/or state. And we don't, we don't spend very much to support the task force, but we, there is cost beyond Tom's salary and his vehicle that um, it's part of the larger story. We're housed by the Border Patrol, they provide us um, uh, support and logistic assistance that's probably invaluable. But we, it's just one of the many challenges we face in government. Um, and it's, it's a far more complicated conversation as to why the state of Washington does not have the JAG funding that was uh, was offered it and then um, was no longer offered.
Could we, as a council, ask a, a letter of recommendation on behalf of OPNET? And asking um, the, you know, council with you to see if, if we could send a letter of recommendation on behalf of our council? We can consider the support for, for our congressional representatives and state representatives because um, this is really important to our community and we'd like to be part of that effort of asking for the funding to be reached. So, thank you.
Understood, and thank you very much, Council. I know we're out of time, we appreciate your, your listening to these fine gentlemen here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Can I ask you just a real quick curiosity? Um, first of all, I, I can't imagine you guys doing what you do, it's just, that is amazing to me. But I, I remember you talking a while back about the drugs that are appearing in Port Angeles come from Mexico. Mexico, that's an amazing pipeline. Are you seeing more or less of that showing up?
Uh, so trends, like anything else in the narcotics world, trends come and go, they change. But right now, it's all Central America. Uh, there's a lot of raw materials that come from Asia, that come into Central America, that get manufactured and then shoved up. So I would explain it best this way, it's still coming in those regards. Asia's got a lot of raw materials that are funnelled into Central America and then basically more. So Walmart is a good example. You buy in huge, huge volumes. They have distribution centers and so that, if you would imagine goods and services that are transported to your local Walmart, wherever they come, overseas and containers to your distribution centers and then volume out from there. Narcotics are exactly the same, it just happens to be illegal. So it's um, the network or the trafficking uh, highways if you will, the routes that they're, they're done. Uh, if we put it on a map, there's so many lines on it that you wouldn't be able to tell what country it is. So I mean, it's, it's kind of the same type of thing, but yes, that's how it happens.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Why didn't you think people do drugs so much?
Oh boy. So unfortunately we don't have time, you could start and talk about that? Um, yeah, it is a valid question. Why, the question was, why did people start using drugs? So that is um, a huge, huge highway as far as why. Um, it's extremely diverse, there are hundreds, hundreds of reasons that are extremely variable. So um, what I'd like to do is let the council keep moving, I can talk to you and to give you some idea about that. Just because we're out of time, we don't wanna hold them up. And, but I'll give you observations so we can always have some kind of community forum somewhere else offsite.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. All right, folks, well, the next presentation is gonna be um, Oregon Creeks and Native Plants.
Okay, I've got pictures with my presentation. Okay, first, I would like to say thank you to Mayor Sissy Brech and Council for inviting me to come and speak um, about something that I'm very passionate about. Okay, my kids just walked in, so this is perfect. Um, my name is Kim Williams and I'm the revegetation supervisor for Lower Elwa Clone Tribe. And so I manage all of the planting activities for all of our restoration projects, not just on the Elwa, but in the whole UNA, the usual and custom hunting and fishing grounds. Um, we have many restoration projects and so I manage all the plant activities that happen in these areas. And today I get to talk about the native plant communities surrounding our urban creeks. So Port Angeles is a gem, as we all know, and we have um, an amazing resource. We have many urban creeks that go right through our city that are salmon berry creeks. And these are just special little treasures and we need to do anything we can to protect them, to help them and um, keep them healthy. So our urban forests are really important for our creeks. And uh, they act as barriers, protection barriers for our rivers. And um, uh, currently, our urban creeks and our urban forests are pretty compromised. They've got a lot of urban pressures and I will touch on some of them. But um, one of the most amazing things that our forests, our urban forests can do for our creeks is um, the ability to reduce runoff water. And these forests protect our rivers and they do it in many different ways, they absorb water. Um, one of the ways that they actually move the water um, is through transpiration. And transpiration is a process by which the trees and plants, all plants, absorb water and release it as water vapor through their leaves. Um, transpiration um, is important. Trees and plants usually only actually need about one to two percent of the water that they actually suck up to grow and they release the rest of it in water vapor. So, um, also canopy cover is very important for our um, urban creeks. This canopy cover, it intercepts rainfall and it may not always suck up all the water, but it can um, shuttle it off to the side. And there's different levels of canopy cover. There is the overstory, which is usually trees. Then the understory, which is the um, woody shrubs, the salal, the salmon berry. And then there's the herbaceous canopy, which is the mosses and the lower growing um, herbaceous plants. At each level, each cover is a protection layer for our creeks, for the soil. Um, a good vegetated creek does prevent um, sediment from, from running off into, into our waterways. It stabilizes the soil and keeps our water clear. And with, um, in a good forest system, you have lots going on above and below ground. You've got uh, roots growing and you have all the leaves biodegrading and it creates um, a better, it's like, it's like a permeable surface. It's a place for the water to go and um, creates more infiltration available. And one of the most amazing things about plants is um, a process called phyto remediation. And that is a process where plants, since they intake so much water, they intake nutrients, they can also intake um, harmful chemicals, contaminants, even heavy metals. And they can degrade the organic compounds. And they can also, um, they usually don't degrade the heavy metals, but they will sequester them and keep them stored. Our urban forests, they are a great stormwater and a good solution and all the more reason to plant more trees, sequester more carbon and um, make sure that they're a thriving system. And um, so how much water does a tree take in? Well, it varies upon the, the timing of the year. There have been studies at Oregon State University, they studied the Western Red Cedar, which is one of our native trees, and found it can intake a, a, a mean of seven gallons of water daily. Now that varies from forty gallons during the heat summer months to one gallon a day during the rainy season and cold season. Um, and they, they studied other trees and they found pretty much the same thing, that it's about six and a half, seven gallons a day on average that a tree can take in. Most of it's being, you know, transpired off, so. So all that water intake helps with um, the contaminants and the pollution that are in our streams. But, so what kind of pollution is in our stream? What streams, what contaminants are there? Well, um, Batella Labs, who is located in SWIN, did some uh, contaminant pollution sampling of our urban streams. They sampled five urban, urban streams. Now this sampling was done in two thousand and three and I'm not aware of any more current pollution sampling, but this is some of the results that they found. Um, they found, so they did five creeks. They did Bell Creek, McDonald Creek, Morse Creek, Ennis Creek and Valley Creek. And they found that the most common contaminants were hydrocarbons and metals. And so here's just a little chart of some of the pollutants they found, not all of them. The hydrocarbons, which are the oil and grease- The hydrocarbons, which are the oil and grease, and those are organic compounds, they're from cars, industry machinery, copper, and that's a heavy metal that tends to settle on the bottom of the stream in the sediment. And they're from building materials, paint, metallic brake pads. And I looked into the metallic brake pads just a little bit and I guess brake pad dust is a big issue in our streams. And it just, you know, as the runoff happens, it just gets right there in the streams. And we do have an option of ceramic brake pads. And we can start using ceramic brake pads. And they do cost a little bit more, but they last longer. So I thought that was interesting. They found zinc, comes from galvanized metals, roofing, gutters, tires, lead, paint, batteries, gasoline, nitrogen, and phosphorus. A lot of that comes from landscaping, fertilizer, and bacteria and pathogens, which come from fecal and human sewage and fecal matter. So I wanted to talk a little bit closer about plants' amazing ability to degrade organic compounds. The process of phyto remediation has been used by the Environmental Protection Agency, you know, for a long time to clean up spills, toxic waste, and polluted areas. And hydrocarbons, the gasoline and the oils, they are biodegraded primarily by bacteria, yeast, and fungi within the rhizosphere where the bacteria and other more microorganisms flourish. So the rhizosphere of a forest is really important. It's basically a word for the root zone. Within the root zone, the roots are pretty active. There have been studies looking at the soil within the rhizosphere and then just outside the rhizosphere and they found up to 100 times more microorganisms than not. And it's just a place where the roots, they exude the sugars and the enzymes and amino acids, just promotes bacterial growth. All of this bacterial growth can degrade, help to degrade hydrocarbons. And the rhizosphere is not just around tree roots, but it's around all the roots, it's all root systems. So it's the understory roots and also even the mosses are important. And so a whole forest community is much more efficient and just better at keeping clean water for our streams and our salmon. Another, another point that, of a healthy forest is that they have, there's a lot of fungi in a healthy forest. And fungi are really important to break down hydrocarbons. And those are called mycorrhizal relationships. The mycorrhizal relationships are the underground hyphae fungal strands that are connected to all the different roots and rootlets and they connect to all the different plants in this little underground highway, it's a little community under there. So an active soil makes good, a good forest, it's all in the soil. So two of our native plants are well-known and used for bio remediation or phyto remediation methods. We have the black cottonwood tree, Populus balsamifra, and also the willow species of trees. Now both these plants can intake a lot of water and that's just the key to them being able to take up these pollutants and then, you know, degrade them. And the willow tree, they've done studies on their roots, that they can actually, they're really good at taking up some of the heavy metals, the nickel, lead, and they can sequester them in the roots, store them in their roots. So the heavy metals are not usually chemically altered or biodegraded very much, but they're stored there in the plants. So lots of trees are really important for our urban forests. Large coniferous trees add so much benefit to our urban forests. When they fall into the rivers or into the creeks, they provide habitat. And this is contrary to older stream clearing activities that went on. And we are finding that when trees or big branches fall in, it creates pools, it creates riffles, creates complexity for the stream, which are really needed by the fish. They need their resting places, both adult and the juvenile fish use these places. Not to mention that they provide canopy shade, they keep the temperatures cool for spawning salmon. The spawning salmon, they need 10 degrees Celsius, 10 to 12 degrees, 50 to 53 degrees Fahrenheit. So there's just so many reasons why we need more trees in our urban creeks. So there's not a lot of fish data on our urban streams. So Lower Elwah Tribe is collecting data. Most of the data that we have are just anecdotal accounts, people remembering oral history from tribal members who are fishermen and know fish. So Tom Water Creek is one creek that we're looking at. We have a fish sampling monitoring project with Fiero Marine Life Center. And we also, the Port Angeles School District also come and help out, bring their kids, which is really great. We construct a weir, almost, I'll call it a weir, across the river and it captures the outmigration of any fish. So the fish are funneled into a box and the box is checked daily. And it is checked by Helen Anderson from Fiero Marine Life Center. And she does this and she coordinates all the volunteers to come and check the fish and identify them and measure them. And she brings kids so they get, they learn how to identify their fish. So she has collected this data and this is a project we've had since 2015. And if you look at the bottom graph, the green and the purple are the trout. And a lot of our trouts are resident here and those are the cutthroat and rainbow trouts. And if you look at the red bar, that represents our koho, smolt. And so up the side are the number of fish and we've got the years on the bottom. And so in 2018, I mean, we've had like hardly any koho through the years, but in 2018, we had a presence of 120-ish or 110-ish smolts, koho smolts. And that's just not very many. It's wonderful that our anadromous fish are still in our urban creeks, at least one of them, or a couple that we know of. But it's really not that many. When those little smolts are about that big, they are going out to the ocean, it's time, they're ready to go to the ocean and go live for about three years and then come back. We get very, we're finding that we get about 1% return, 1% to 2% return. So it's not that many. There's a lot of, a lot of issues out there that our fish are facing. But it does show a presence of salmon in our urban creeks, all the more reason to protect them and help them, what an amazing, you know, legacy we can leave for our future if we can increase the salmon in our creeks. We also do some fish, we have fish data from Ennis Creek too. Those are the only two urban streams that we have fish data from. I just wanted to bring up some, two pieces of important legislation that have been passed. These are just really important things that protect our forests and our fish and our rivers. And we have the Forest and Fish Law, which was endorsed by the federal government in 2006. And basically, this was the creation of buffer zones. And buffer zones are the area where you cannot build or log next to a stream and you must leave a certain amount of riparian vegetation. And the buffer zone length, it will vary according to the size of the creek. There's all these calculations and equations that they do to figure out the buffer zone. Yeah, I know the Pish River is 200-foot buffer zone, but the smaller the creek, the smaller the buffer zone, they can get to be 50 feet. And also wanted to just remind you of the current ruling, Supreme Court ruling from June 2018 to remove any fish barriers. And this was really important to look at the current fish passage situations and fixity culverts that are not allowing the fish to pass. So just making it easier for them, because there's so many obstacles that our fish face. So our native plant communities surrounding our streams are really important to protect our streams, but they are really compromised, especially our urban forests. Urban forests are under different pressures, they have, they have pressures from, well, many, but a lot of landscaping plants will leek into the forest and become invasive plants there. They take over. So here's a picture of three common invasive plants in our urban streams. We have the English ivy and we've all seen that, hopefully we know what that is. And it can kill trees and climb up and kill trees. We have the yellow art angel, a lot of people don't know about this, but it's really important, it's not on the quarantine list yet for horticulture import uses. But it is really aggressive, it's commonly used as a landscape plant because it's a good shade-loving ground cover. And, but it's ravaging our forests, it mows over, it just grows over everything. And then we have herbivore, which is a little low-growing geranium. And yeah, it's really a problem. These plants, they monoculture and they reduce the diversity available to, to birds, to other wildlife for foraging and nesting materials and they outcompete our native plants. So really important. So we do have a lot of, Lower Elwah does have a lot of polling parties. There, there are just so many benefits from our urban forests and I just wanted to quickly go over a few more that I didn't get to mention. They reduce the noise pollution, reduce air pollution, they sequester carbon, they promote healthy activities, walking, hiking, birding. And I just want to stop there for a second, promoting healthy activities. Our urban creeks currently are pretty inaccessible and that is, you know, it's hard to find a trail, there's not trails. When you don't have a trail, people are attracted to creeks and to the forests, the native vegetation gets trampled. And put a trail in and they will follow it. That's what we found. So we need trails in our urban creeks so people can be out there and enjoy, enjoy them. They have such a positive psychological effect and they bring connection to the place that you live. So our urban streams and forests are a beacon for our community. They are used as outdoor classrooms. I know so many groups, school groups, high school, middle school, elementary, nature bridge, they, it's a great place, accessible for buses and it's close to the schools. They go out to do water quality, they look at insects, they, you know, do some botany. And yeah, really important to have those trail systems. And people love to be outdoors. At Lower Elwah, we engage a lot of volunteers for helping. We have just, it's just, and that's just one of the delights of working on that project is all the people that I get to meet, they're so excited about pulling invasive plants. We've pulled hundreds of pounds of invasive plants or planted hundreds of trees and shrubs, 100,000, 100,000, hundreds of thousands. And then you get to teach people about, about the plants. And it's really a great time. And so they are really just a beacon for our community. And they just, they give us so much. And so I just, you know, fisheries and forestry resources for Lower Elwah Tribe are such a priority. I mean, that's everything to them. And so we, we want to work with you guys, work together to, you know, protect and enhance our, our urban creeks and our salmon-bearing streams, or all streams, you know, for that matter. And so thank you for listening to me and looking at my presentation. Are there any questions?
One of the things I want to tell you is thank you so much for the presentation. We have six creeks that cross Port Angeles and it is something that has been brought up as being very important for us to start concentrating on. I know that access to them is, and having trails is going to be really important. So we've got a couple of projects, I don't know, the Grand Lakes, taking a look at a couple of creeks and how we can perform with that. But this is just a valuable presentation for us to truly get a sense of appreciation for what we have. We are such a unique community, having six creeks that cross our city. And so, so thank you for all that information.
Yeah. And I just want to say that the habitat biologists and our fisheries management, they, we do a lot of work on the western rivers, the bigger rivers with the bigger salmon, bigger fish. They all tell me, I mean, that the urban creeks are just as important to them. So just, you know, they're pretty compromised, but no less important.
Thank you for that. Thank you. All right. Any further comments, questions?
I just really appreciate Lower Elwah Tribe's leadership on this because it's great, you guys are doing a lot of work, it's very important and this is a great presentation.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
All right. So council, do you want to get back to order the agenda of all pieces of the list? Are we ready for that? Okay. So moving on to the consent agenda.
We didn't lay items.
Oh, lay items. So are there any lay items that we need?
None in session.
So consent agenda, so let me get consent agenda.
Call number four, please.
Okay. City Council needs support November 6, 2018, expected to report from November 10th to November 23, 2018 in the amount of $560,670.45. Material purchase of composite recycling technology center park benches. So are there any questions or concerns or any other things?
I hope that we approve the consent agenda.
Sorry.
All right. So the only thing I have is on the benches, which I think is a great idea. I'm hoping that we get some nice colors, because I know that blue bench is just beautiful, but that's just my little thought. Anyway, so any other questions or concerns on this? All right, so, so will that have the motion? Do we have a motion? Sorry. So we have a motion on the table and all those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
They can post? Okay. Asked unanimously, and now we've got number four, interlocal agreement between the city of Port Angeles, Clough County, and Squim.
I'll just vote on this separately. I am not in support of this. $30,000 is a lot of money. $30,000 is a lot of money. We do surveys, we do polls. You know, this is an agreement that we have with the county. And in my opinion, that should be honored. I don't see what the difficulty is in getting the correct numbers without having to have an outside agency or company profit off of us being unable to get these numbers. And so I'm not going to support this.
I can let staff address it to some degree, but I've been on the committee as the representative from council, working on this issue. And I do think the way that we're going to get the information that we need from the county in order to determine whether or not what we're paying right now is reasonable, or whether it needs to be more or less, or what have you. It's going to take, I believe, an outside person to do that. And I'll let staff speak a little bit more to it. There was a solid group that met on scope of work, and that's sort of the issue, so.
I think that is correct. We have had two separate discussions with Squim and with the county. It's becoming apparent that the county did not able to provide any numbers. As a matter of fact, one of the issues that I wanted to bring forward tonight, deals whatever topic, the county has a couple of times told us that because of their accounting system, they cannot quantify how much money they were spending on District Court Number One, or District Court Number Two, or... Anyway, of course, they can't, they don't have that. And it's because of the way their accounting system works. And because of that, we actually, after the packet went out, we actually received a request from the county to include in our RFQ an explicit statement saying that the person that we intend to hire, or we propose to the city council, we hire this person to perform the study, that that person would explicitly include a quantification of the cost of running this District Court Number One. They want this outside person to do it because the county can't. That request came from the county. And so in the packet, the recommendation for the motion before the city council is to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement and to correct script and regent errors and to make minor modifications. And we would, as clarification, I would like the council to understand that we would treat this as a minor modification and simply include this specificity in the agreement. I think it's probably already covered, personally, but the county would like that maybe explicitly. But the reason for that, again, is that the county has told us on at least a couple occasions, they don't pay that cost. They can't tell us how much it actually costs, how much they're paying to perform these services.
The county came to us and said that there was, and showed us data that said that due to state law changes on legal financial regulations for indigenous people, they had certain expenses. They put numbers in the spreadsheet. And now we're hearing that they actually can't even put those numbers in paper? It happens that the numbers are missing before.
Guys, I think what we've heard in those original numbers that were received, there were a number of assumptions made across the board. And I think it's really important that we have numbers that really don't take into account assumptions. And that we really have someone with good expertise digging in and taking a good look at those numbers. I think it's important of the partnership, and I'm very happy to say that I think we've come a long way from where we were several months ago, where we had more of a contentious discussion on this matter. And I think it's really important that we move forward in partnership with the city of Squim and Clough County and make sure that we get this issue resolved and hopefully get some positive forward progress that is very long-term in nature.
I looked at those numbers too, Lindsay, very closely. And I didn't cast aspersions on the person who created those numbers. There was several erroneous assumptions. And also, actually, to put it mildly, the math was incorrect on those numbers. And so that spreadsheet was species at best, again, not cast aspersions. So I talked to a couple of the county commissioners on this. And they began, as, they first took that at face value, that, those numbers. And as they dealt into them more, and as I pointed out to them, the errors and assumptions that were made were incorrect on those numbers. They became more and more concerned about that. And hence, they're backing off on that, canceling that interlocal agreement that we had. And so that's why we saw that letter come back and say, you know, let's do this. I agree with you on the expense of this, but looking, having looked into a little bit more, two things occurred to me. First of all, I think this is going to give us a good baseline to start with. Remember that the county now has a CFO. And I assume, I'm hoping that that new chief financial officer will have more of a handle on this. And it's very scary to hear that the county doesn't know what they're spending on court costs. But having said that, if we can create a baseline from which we can all agree that this is it, and then hold the county's feet to the fire coming, going forward, we have somewhere to start. It's up to $30,000. That doesn't necessarily mean it will be $30,000. It could be significantly less, depending on the RFP that we get back. So I, as you were taken aback initially on this, and then as I dealt into it more, and went through my notes on the spreadsheet that the county executive provided, again, the errors that were in there, make this need a good baseline start. And then going forward, the CFO of the county should be able to provide us real-time numbers. And that's what I'm expecting. So whereas I was a little concerned about the expenditure on this, I'm going to support it because I think we need a baseline to start with. And so that all three of us can agree with going forward.
In the past, when we discussed budgets and we went through the entire process of creating a budget for the next year, routinely, Mr. Blor would come to make a presentation to the council year after year and say, "Our expenses at the county have gone up hundreds of thousands of dollars. And what we had budgeted for the jail was just blown through the roof." And this went on year after year. When we finally got our 10-year agreement, it was like, oh, this is so important because now we have something we can budget. Because otherwise, it just created a constant annual crisis, financial crisis, with the costs going through the roof. So as much as I hate to put out a cost for the study, since the county cannot provide us the accurate funding that we need, I really need someone to come in and give us some numbers we can depend on. We cannot go to the old guessing game that this is our budget and then have the county come back every year and throw tremendously new costs at us. It just, it was too much for us to deal with. So I'm hoping this can get us back on a 10-year program where we will know what to budget and it'll be predictable.
I was just going to articulate that. I think it's also important just to note that it is a joint agreement, both the contract in itself and this, so I think it's important that this is a joint agreement, that we're all participating in this, to come to a conclusion about what the actual cost is, what the scope of work actually is, and what that looks like. And so I appreciate that everyone's been willing to sit down at the table. And I really hope that this next step does bring to light some concrete information that we can move forward with.
We have a 10-year agreement. We know the costs. If the county doesn't know how to budget or know what it's spending, like, why are we paying for that? I mean, I appreciate Councilmember Meredith leaking on this one.
So to make sure I have this correct, Nate. They don't have the numbers. They can't come up with the numbers. They don't track the numbers. And they want the city of Port Angeles, the city of Squim, and the county to jointly share what it costs, what they can't come up with, for some outside company to come up with that.
So, Mayor and Council, I think it's important to recognize that you have multiple divisions over at the county that are actually reporting in a variety of different units, a variety of different ways. The complexity of those numbers can be very confusing. And the suggestion of actually having someone from the outside take a look at those numbers and make sense out of them was actually the city's suggestion. So both the city of Squim and the city of Port Angeles undertook that suggestion, provided it to the county, and we thought it was a good idea. Because the cryptic way in which we were receiving those numbers, seeing the reporting from multiple different units, in many cases, those units conflicting with the way that they're reporting that information, I think it's really important that we have someone professional make some common sense out of those numbers so that we have a good starting place and a good baseline moving forward, hopefully keeping the existing contract in place.
So I appreciate that you pointed out the county is very diverse in how its leadership is made up. We're talking about a variety of elected officials that don't report to each other necessarily with one head like the system or like we have. But, you know, one of the other things on my mind is, you know, we're all residents of the county. We are all individually constituents here. And I think that there's probably a lot of opinions in this room about certain aspects of how the county is not managing their costs the way we would like them to. I think this agreement would give us a concrete way to say, hey, here are some costs that we don't think are appropriate. I think there's different county officials that have this opinion that think some costs are not in line with what they should be. And there's political considerations and there's budgetary considerations. And so I think that having this, you know, agreement where we actually have good ground truth to some of these numbers to say, hey, look at our jail costs. Are these reasonable? Because we're sharing them one way or the other. We are going to be sharing these either through, whether we have a 10-year agreement or not, we are going to be sharing those costs, both as residents of Clough County and as people that, you know, before we were using the Clough County Jail for what we were doing around criminal justice. So we share these costs. Some of these costs I don't think are as controlled as they could be. I think this is a good way to start that dialogue. And I also think that, I definitely also bristle at the cost of paying consultants. I appreciate that concern. At the same time, I, you know, my responsibility is, what in the long term is going to save the city the most money? I think an agreement to have interlocal agreement with the county for a prison and criminal justice service is going to result in us saving money over the long term. It's also going to save the state's criminal county money. So I don't want to throw a wrench near that interlocal agreement over, you know, up to $30,000, which I definitely bristle at. But I think that we're on, I think that working together and trying to make some sense of this is going to save us money in the long term.
Go ahead, Lindsay. I was just gonna, I have lots of thoughts because I've been participating in conversations, so, in the meetings. But if you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. How will the consultants be hired? It says in Section 1, the participants have agreed to hire an independent professional consultant to conduct a study of criminal justice system. I think this is worthwhile, but how are we going to evolve? Or how are the participants going to select that person, or that consultant?
So we will be launching an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, to select that individual. In addition to that, the city has stepped up to play the fiscal agent responsibility in that relationship. I hear counsel relative to the price, and that too is a concern to staff. And we will do our very best to focus on ensuring that we pay no more than is absolutely necessary in actually getting that scope of work performed.
I just wanted to reiterate that. I do think it's important to know that, my sense is that this is the way to move forward and not have the county cancel the contract, which will cost us astronomically more than $30,000. Now, there are other ways around that potentially, but I feel like this was a decision that everyone came to as a group. There was consensus on it. And it makes sense as a way to get the information that we need to move forward with a contract that is based in, where the costs are based on real information.
Sorry, the county can't cancel the contract. That's breach of contract. So, I mean, why are we, yeah, I mean, so, yeah. I think this is a better option than suing the county for breach of contract. But like, let's be clear about the water negotiating position is here. We're in a 10-year agreement, have members to substantiate any material change of circumstance. That's what we discussed today. So like, if they want to reach a contract, that's poor form on their part. But if we need to help them do better, then I think we should.
So I just wanted to compliment Councilmember Meredith's file poll studying of this because I do agree with them, we should be able to pay the straight things out with the numbers we're paying. But apparently, we're in a position of self-defense financially here. And it's been a real debacle in the past, a real crisis for us financially. So I agree. I don't want to do it, but I kind of feel like self-defense, we ought to move forward and kind of get straightened out because it's been a problem for years. And all of a sudden, it popped up this year, and it seems to be a problem again.
So I'm going to shine on this because I agree with a lot of points being made. The percentage that we are paying, I don't believe should be a third. I know that right now it's divided with Squim and Port Angeles and the county. Now, the counties should have already been able to do this. The fact that they can't doesn't mean that they're just a third. They really, it's almost, I kind of feel like, they at least bear half the burden of not having been able to do this. And then Squim and Port Angeles are the cities that are being impacted by this. So I would want some negotiation about the percentage because I don't think it's fair the way it's set up. The other thing, but I do agree that we need something. So the other thing about this interlocal agreement is that the person who gets chosen can't just be an accountant. It's got to be someone who knows about court. It's got to be someone who knows about court diversionary programs, drug court, you know, the treatment of little jail. Because if that person doesn't know how to reduce jail costs, then those costs are going to continue to go up. And if those programs are not in place and we have not set any way of putting those things in place, then we won't know whether best practices are being followed and whether our costs can actually be reduced because some of these problems run with us. So if we're going to do this interlocal agreement, then I think we really need to make sure that the whole system gets reviewed and not just the accounting numbers. Because that was part of the problem. Part of the problem was that, you know, you have someone who was sent to jail because they couldn't pay a fee. And therefore, now we have to, not only that, the person might have stolen 300 bucks, but by the time it went through the system, us taxpayers were paying $30,000 in jail costs and prosecution costs and things like that, which didn't make any sense. So I want the review of the system reviewed as well because it's, otherwise, I don't think we're doing the right thing for the city.
Madam Mayor, for the record, that is part of the scope of work. We are taking a systematic approach, and no, it's not just an accounting review.
All right, Council, how do they want to move forward?
I agree that the review will authorize the mayor to sign the attached interlocal agreement and authorize the mayor to correct script and regent error and make minor modifications as necessary, including the one that was mentioned by Attorney Laura Seaton.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? So I'd like to, like I said, I would like to see the percentage is renegotiated. So I'm not sure if it's ready for signature.
I appreciate that, and that makes a lot of sense to me. At the same time, I think that that's getting to, I don't want to say that the budget does work, but I think that that's, you're probably right that that would be more fair. I just don't think it's relevant enough to a person.
I think the argument could be made that there are some efficiencies for us in not having a court, and there are some costs that the county incurs by providing that service for us despite the fact that it is on a contractual basis. And so I don't... And so I don't feel like a third is an unreasonable amount from that perspective. I understand your perspective, and, you know, there's lots of different ways to split it, so.
I would also certainly say that the city of SWIM, like this would be much greater point for them to make with their.
Correct, correct. So I think that's part of it, is that we all sat down together and sat happening in the foreword as a group, and so this being an even distribution is a part of that collaboration and agreement that we've come to to make this in the foreword. The Lizzy.
I would also like to agree that we currently have a contract. And so that, I, I get that this is probably a good thing to do, but it really does work for me that we have a contract with the county, and they don't have the numbers to show us on how they could change that. And so that, that just seems unfair, but I also understand that this in the long could save us a lot of money, so. I guess I will be supporting this, even though, I guess I'd like them to know that it just doesn't feel fair.
Thank you, we'll share that.
All right, Council. So do we have a motion?
You have a motion and a second.
Thank you. Yeah, I got a little distracted tonight, I'm sorry. So we have a motion on table and a second. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so the motion carries. Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, so moving on, we had the public hearing, we had the ordinance, so we are come to the two, this resolution's not requiring council public hearing, the 2018 column county-wide planning policy.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, this is the adoption of the 2018 column county-wide planning policy. Washington State Growth Management Act of 1990 requires a county that plans under RCW36.78A will, for each, adopt county-wide planning policy in cooperation with the cities located within the county. These policies were last adopted in 1992. At that time, the management steering committee was appointed to review and draft the policies. In February 2016, county and city community development directors and planning managers met again to develop a general strategy and schedule for updating the CWPP in light of current work program areas. My now recommendation was to reconvene a growth steering, a student growth management committee to review and recommend proposed updates to the CWPP starting in April 2017. That committee did collaborate and met between April 2017 and June of 2018. Steering committee by general consensus recommended adoption of the revised county-wide planning policy as essentially demonstrated in the attached policy net address with your packet. And on October 2nd, 2018, the county-wide policy was adopted by column county, and now it's seen in the cities of Forks, Port Angeles, and SWIM to accept and ratify proposed updates to county-wide planning policy. So that's our recommendation. Council is to pass the resolution as presented.
Great. So let me read the resolution quick here. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the column county-wide planning policy under RCW36.78A.210 in coordination with column county and the cities of SWIM and Forks.
I don't want to add that I was the county, or the city representative on that, or the steering committee, but at least there's this one over here, so there's a handful of meetings.
And I want to hear, do you have some last names?
They were great, yes. They were really dense, and I had a lot of catching up to do as, you know, if it needed 2017 that I was not aware of, so. There's, there's really good, and I think that the one highlight was the water resources section and the environmental section was kind of a real substantial rewrite.
I'm sorry, I just have to make a personal observation. I found it fun reading the budget, but boy, this kicked my, you know what. Wow, that was tough reading. So anyway, for what it's worth, great, great work on all parts, though. I got as far as maybe the glossary of terms, and then I just got ready to give up, but I forged on. Thanks, Mike, I appreciate your, your work on that.
Any other comments on this?
So I think it's a really important document because it's a policy from column county, city of Forks, city of Port Angeles, city of SWIM. And so it is our agreement on how all of us as local jurisdictions plan together. So it's probably more important to leave this than to leave each individual local government as planned, because this is kind of like a meta-plan or a meta-plan process. And I appreciate everything in there. There was one part that gave me pause because I wasn't quite sure what was intended, so just to put it on the record, I want to share that. In the economic development and employment section, point four, which is on our packet page H30 and the plan page 21, it talks about recreating transportation network redundancy for the ease of people getting services. I was not sure if this was referring to expanding road network or like creating additional road network. I inquired with Kevin Lopigro, who spearheaded this for the county, as well as Director Barkey and Councilmember French, and Kevin Lopigro's response on that point said, quote, "The policy could have been written to simply state that our transportation infrastructure is vital to maintain and promote economic growth in our region. The committee's desire was to recognize all economic opportunities county-wide and promote that, and promote that the county slash city could create policy that would address the place focused on local slash organic growth, realizing that our transportation system county-wide is a quote road system end quote and not water, train, or air, that all governments would do the best to create and further opportunity for all economic options." So we're recognizing that over that point as well. So I really want to thank, you know, city staff who put effort into this and the other folks on the committee. I think it's a really strong overall plan for how we move forward. And, you know, one of the challenges for us as a city is we can't control our own urban sprawl, just to use the phrase, for lack of a better term, because we don't control what happens outside the city jurisdiction, outside the city property limits. And so it's really up to the county to prevent that urban sprawl and help encourage it to be concentrated in the urban areas. And so, you know, the challenge is on the county to follow through with this, and I hope that the quality of this document helps to reflect the county's ambition toward that. So thank you, please.
Any other comments? All right, Council, how do we work?
I think that's it. Just, you know, to tie it onto that, in some of those meetings, it was really interesting to see that, that different structure the county has, because we had column county commissioner as well as the elected director of community development for the county, and her staff members involved in that conversation. And so, you know, as Allison mentioned, these policies were last adopted in 1992. So that, it's encouraging to see that the county was, and that was one of the things being those meetings, I was really encouraged to see that the county was not pushing back as hard as it seems like they have in the past with regards to planning and, you know, just some really common sense policies. So I think this represents a really big step for us in that coordinated plan county-wide. I do think that we did get, you know, there was some really great suggestions from some of the SWIM representatives, and we didn't necessarily get everything that we wanted in this. I don't think it's necessarily a perfect document that represents everything that the city of Port Angeles wants, but it's a very big step in that county-wide plan. And I, it was just really encouraging to see the county value that because that has not always been the way that it's worked in the past. And what I would say is, just like within plan, these county-wide planning policies are only as good as our commitment to them and the county's commitment to them and the SWIM policies' commitment to them. And so there's a lot of flexibility as there is with any planning document. And so I really hope that we see a continued commitment to actually doing what our county-wide planning policies say we should do.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just, just a question for Director Barkey and Councilmember French. In going through this and preparing for this and thinking deeply, are there things in here that, that are not along the lines of our comprehensive plan? Or is this compatible with our comprehensive plan and what it is and where it's going?
No, actually, I see great compatibility, though it will certainly be something that our planning commission will keep in mind as they review in our current comprehensive plan for 2019 and then. If anything, I think actually the city's comprehensive plans helped to actually bring just a current conversation forward since we were dealing with a very dated document, essentially overlapping kind of early state growth management efforts. So it was actually helpful to have the cities work together and just share what we have done through our comprehensive plan, and then that's.
So I'm feeling you asked for a solution as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we had, we began our deliberations at five o'clock this evening. May I interrupt the five minute break?
Sure. All right, folks, we will take a five minute break. So, we are moving on. So the next one is other considerations. City Council Youth Participation.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start. So, I guess we are asking a couple of questions. We'll give them another minute here. Not, not today. Okay. Okay, so after one of our think tanks, we, I was asked to do a little research about how we might incorporate youth participation in the council. And I want to start by apologizing for my voice. It's probably a little difficult to listen to, but I will guarantee you it's better than it was on Friday because you can actually hear me. So I met in my research with members from the Peninsula College Student Body and Great Cross of the college. I met with Michelle Dentry from the Youth Government Program, and I met with some state staff also about what this might look like. And I had lots of ideas and lots of different thoughts about how it could look and how it could work and, and what would be a good formulation. And I actually would like to present an idea that was suggested by Corey Delkott, because I think it's a really good starting point. And I think one of the things I kept thinking about was all of my ideas initially would really have resulted in extra staff time, and I feel like we spent a lot of time talking about how much staff is already doing, and I wanted to be really aware of that while still finding a way to incorporate youth. So my recommendation, and this is completely open for discussion, it was just a starting point for our conversation, is that we add two positions for youth on each of the city committees. There are already a couple of committees that have youth participation. Those, the rationale for that in part is those are already staffed, they already have regular meeting times. We don't have to create a new committee that requires staff time. And while I know it's been challenging in the past to recruit those, I think if it's a, if it is really a council-driven initiative, we can reach out to adults that we know in the community to make recommendations for young people to apply for those positions. I then also think it would be nice to have all of those participants maybe meet on a quarterly basis with a council member or two to review vague issues that we're going to be dealing with, or to just kind of have them talk to each other about what they've been doing and educate each other about what their committees are working on. I do think it would be nice to have them rotate, so we have, I think, seven committees that could be populated by youth. So if we had 14 people, we could do a pretty good rotation through council meetings that, particularly if we have, if we have an issue on the agenda that's particularly relevant to one of those committees, maybe those are the representatives that would come to the council meeting that night. Because I do think it's valuable to have them at the council meeting. I, I do like the way SWIM has their youth participants set up, they sit at a table adjacent to the dais. But what I observed with SWIM is that they're primarily, they're reporting about what's happening at the high school, and I feel like I would really like our participants to, to do more and to really be a part of the work of the city. So those are the three pieces that I thought about how we might build it as an initial step, because, you know, we can always add to it, change it, adjust it, but that seemed like a good way to, to start. And because of that, I think the groups that we, that I would suggest targeting, and based on my conversations, are potentially even eighth graders from Stevens, certainly P.I. High School, and I would like us to consider reaching out specifically to the tribe to look for tribal representation. I do think if we go this route, Peninsula College students are already voting age, most of them, and have the potential to be on our committees already. So I think it would be great to reach out to them and let them know when we have openings to, to encourage them to participate. But I don't know that it fits in this model as it's, as I'm suggesting it right now. So that's sort of where I landed, and I would love to have some discussion about it. My hope was that maybe tonight we might come to some consensus and ask staff to draft an ordinance for us to be able to move forward. That's right.
See, just, I think this is a great idea. I find the various organizations I belong to, there's the lack of generation, whatever it is, X, Y, Z, or whatever, I can't remember the chromosome they're in now, but the problem is that they don't, they're not joining. They, they, they don't. If you look at boards and committees, you know, it's middle-aged folks enough that are participating, and the 30-some-odd-year-olds and younger don't participate. So to get them, first of all, to encourage them to join and get into this arena at an earlier age, may encourage them to someday be on the planning commission, you know, those type of things later on. Again, and it's not, it's endemic to the entire society. If you look at Kewanas, if you look at Rodry, if you look at, you know, Surof, and I'm sure you, you see a lack of 30-ish type of people there, and I think the reason is they're not getting exposed to it at a younger age. So I really commend this, and I'm in favor of it. The only question I have, are you looking at these committees and ones that we have committee assignments to? Is that your suggestion?
No, I'm looking at the, like, the standing advisory committees and council commissions and committees of the city. So Parks and Rec, Utility Advisory Committee, those are the two that come to my mind in this very moment.
As a point of information, is there a minimum age requirement for applicants or people who are serving on those committees at this point?
That is a good question that I did not confirm. My understanding, so I will say that I went on the assumption, based on some conversation, that you have to be voting age to apply, but I did not confirm that, so it would be worth confirming. I still think it would be worth expanding the numbers with, with those two seats being specifically for someone who is in high school or, or even grade.
So I think this would be great for the committees. I know that you said even though the college, they are here, supposed to be voting age anyway. One of the things that I think would be good for the college group is maybe taking the council agenda and giving us their input. So our packets come out on that, you know, that version, and then our reading is on Tuesday. And if the, if the college group can take that agenda and, you know, give feedback on the items, I think if we work a while, whether it comes, whether our center comes here and gives us their feedback. here and gives us their feedback. So we may have to extend their three minutes so that they're able to give a complete feedback to the agenda. And/or if they can turn in a written report so that we know where we stand. I don't know. I just feel like the college group should, I know they can join that committee, but they're not. And so therefore, if, and there's a group that's interested, so maybe giving them access to be able to give us feedback every month, say once a month or something.
I like that idea. And I do think, just having had this conversations with a couple of people, also professors at the college, I think there are faculty in particular at the college who have an awareness of particular college students who do their classes or whatever, who are really interested in local government politics, sort of a bigger picture, that we could connect with for that kind of feedback, so.
That sort of answers my question a little bit. I wonder what the demographics are, you know, a lot of, so there's a lot of running start students at the college. And then next in line, okay, you've got students that are from out of the area or foreign exchange students. How many of those students at the college, what you would think of as a traditional under eighteen to twenty-two-year-old student, are there to represent that group versus the running start students that are already up there? You know, and then those students that are doing online classes? I'm not sure they do classes at the college anymore. It looks at my daughter's class, K-12. You know, and how many fit in that group, I guess? So, I mean, I'm sure there's some, but I think that that shift may be a little different than what it was 20 years ago, or what we would think of as 20 years ago. You know, maybe when the Frenchman went there, it was a little different.
So you're speaking to the diversity of the students and who gets to do this?
Well, who would be able, so obviously, I wouldn't think you'd want a student that was from out of state or out of area because they would only be here X number of months out of the year. I don't know. I guess I don't really understand how it's looked with the college. But I am in favor and I would support the students, under eighteen student age for those city advisories.
I do like what you mentioned.
You have one other thought is when we go out to try to get these positions filled, it'd be good to point out, you know, not to make it transactional, but there'd be large benefits to these students if they're making scholarship notebooks or college applications. To, you know, to have that civic involvement could be a big plus to them. And I think, you know, there's a lot of smart kids in our schools. I employ some of them and they're extremely, you know, there's a lot of smart kids. I think that they have a lot of things competing for their time. And so I think we do have to, you know, mention these benefits that they, you know.
And I do commend you for mentioning that because these schools, when you start reading, my daughter's a senior this year, and you start reading through what they're looking for, huge community service and civic involvement and leadership. Not just grades and SAT scores that they may have been thirty years ago, but all those other items now. And they could make or break the deal for you, whether or not, you know, you're ahead of another student.
So the other thing that I considered is the Youth and Government Program has about 20 participants, I think she said. And then there's also a 4-H Government Program. And they really focus on the state legislature, which is fantastic because that's a great place to look as well. So I like the idea of being able to provide some way to participate on a local level and get people excited about participating in local government. And one thing that was compelling to me about the idea of plugging students into the committees is they're smaller. While they meet in council chambers, it tends to be generally a little less formal consistently, but I feel like that gives an environment in which they're much more likely to be mentored and brought in and really be involved in the conversation and issues that are, that are being discussed. And then maybe we build from it. I also think it does limit, because at one point I was like, ooh, we can do this and this, and then I'm like, well, that's a lot of hours every month. And I think we want to be realistic about all the other things that students are participating in. So I felt like this proposal sort of has a not unlimited amount of time, but has some reasonable amount of time for people to commit to things, so.
At least two of the advisory boards already have student members. And so I ask a question for back row of staff, is how does that work? Any feedback there?
Sure. So we've got two student reps, and over the last few years, we've had great success, great kids. Like you said, doing it for a lot of reasons, mainly to be part of the community, but also to get letters for their scholarship notebooks and things like that. We've had a really good success with the Youth United Program because they need X amount of hours, and our club continues to build. And they like to be, do community service. So being on our personal recreation, beautification commission kind of fits them because they're out in the community doing things and they just enjoy going to meetings once a month. And we do have kids between freshmen and seniors. So a lot of time for you to get juniors and seniors, you can do it two years, maybe then you drive. And so everyone else will go to sophomore and just drop off.
And we have a youth member on Public Safety Advisory Board, and they've had it for years, and they've been great. They provide great input from the, from high school and get a lot of kind of inside track what's going on in high school. And at the last meeting, a student brought around a speech that was, I mean, outstanding, continuing forever. It's been really good.
And one of our members this year is actually this student that brought this packet for you guys.
So does any, so how many committees do we have that would be advisory that would fit this?
I think we decided there were seven. I left my list at home. That's the one thing I don't have, that I would just, for that.
That's okay. So we know that at least we have seven, and we would, we would want two students?
I think two is good because then there's a little bit of redundancy, but also they're not coming by themselves and gives just a little bit, even a little bit more perspective with two different students, so. Also, I wanted to mention that one thing that did cross my mind is the potential of figuring out how we might be able to support transportation for these folks, like bus passes or something like that.
It is pretty similar with the code. And I don't see age limitations in the membership requirements. And so, you know, in many of the commissions, you know, there's certain requirements, like, for example, Parks and Rec, two members of Parks and Rec shall be appointed by a majority vote, seven members appointed by the city council. These two members shall be Port Angeles high school students, residents of Port Angeles. So often there'll be residence requirements, but not always with all these commissions. Each commission has its own set of standards, but I don't see age as a limitation of those for general. So part of this might just be, you know, recruiting a lot of people, knowing that these openings are there. But we could also specifically change and require it in some of the commissions that don't have it to create dispositions for youth. I do think it's important to have voices for young people in the city's business. So thanks for this.
Any other comments? So I do have a question then. So we're talking, at this point, we have seven committees, we've got two people per committee, so we've got 14 students that participate. And so we're looking at Stevens and Port Angeles High School and then the college, right?
I certainly don't, I, when I look at this initially, if there, I was admittedly operating it under assumptions, which is never safe thing to do, that there were age limits. And I did need to clarify that, didn't have time. So I'm not opposed to expanding it to the college. I just want to make sure we don't get really heavy, I mean, it would be nice if we had diversity of representation also. And I do think it would be worth reaching out specifically to the youth leaders at the tribe. And I have an email into Chairman Charles, taken a contact for that person. So it would just be, I think, like everything else, reaching out and saying, this is something that's come up, and we have openings, and, you know, please pass applications along to people that you think would be interested, or something that was.
So would we, I guess, the schools would figure out how to select the people? Or people would just apply and then we would, so I guess, do we interview them?
My idea was, we can get involved if we want. Alternatively, we can say, here's what we'd like to have happen, and have them apply directly to the committees and have the committees select the applicants from the pool that they receive. And then they can just let us know, here's who's been selected, and then we can meet them. We should have an orientation, I think, of everybody and then talk about when they might come to council and that's for them.
Just to add to that, the two boards that already have youth representation on them do it in different ways. So for example, the Public Safety Advisory Board says at least one member shall be a high school student that is recommended by school administration. So that's how that high school student is armed. For Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission, it's two members who are high school students and residents of Port Angeles, and those two are appointed by a majority vote of the seven members of the Parks Recreation and Beautification Commission who are appointed by the city council. So in both of those, the city council doesn't have a role in appointment. One is done by school administration, the other is done by the city council, appointed members of the Parks and Rec Commission.
That makes sense. The only thing that I can see if we do the committees is that the committees deal with very specific topics, and I judge that is always very varied. And I think that that is an experience that would be interesting for them to have, to say, whoa, they're dealing with this and that, you know, and having them as a, I mean, I would almost love, well, maybe it's the college or the, it doesn't matter what group, but having them say, okay, well, we've got six students here that would like calculus. You take the first agenda, I take the second. Something that the students of state can organize around the agenda to be able to give us feedback, or at least a voice, you know, for the students.
So I think, I think that's important as well. And I wonder if that's something that we could happy to build on piece, which is, maybe that's a quarterly thing. When we get them together, we say, okay, so this is what's coming up. Or maybe there is, maybe we do find that there's some work we're doing throughout, through the year, that we would like all of them to weigh in on. And we say, hey, as, as the youth representatives as a part of our city, would you give us some feedback about this? And hopefully they'll reach out to their friends and say, hey, this is coming up. You know, one of the things that, when I was seeing about Parks Department, is the kind of conversations I'm having with my son about the skate park and opinions about that. And I think, you know, that's a group that would be a valuable voice in what's happening there. Is it an issue? Is it not an issue? What needs to? And so there was just a concrete thought about a task for that particular group of students. Admittedly, I wonder who's going to be excited about utilities, but I think there are people, like engineering kind of kids, who might be interested in what our utilities are about. So I don't want to underestimate anybody's interest.
So council, do we have then a general consensus to have two youths in our seven advisory committees? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. So do we want to read a vote? Do we need just a general consensus? Anybody against that idea? So it looks like we have general consensus that we want two youths of power that looks in all our advisory committees.
Is that enough direction for staff to?
That is, thank you. We'll make it happen.
Okay. And so that would be the end piece, and then if it decides to grow or more students want to participate, then we can start tackling the agenda or however the students may want to bring that back to us. Okay. Thank you, Al. Thank you for doing that work. Really appreciate that. All right, on to the think tank discussion. I'm going to bring you guys, I am, I was going to make copies, I didn't get around to making copies, but Vancouver has done that empty home tax. And there's an article that came out, Vancouver hopes empty home tax can help stem affordability crisis. So they are also facing that. And I believe that what I want to do is I will get this into your mailboxes so that you can all read the different articles, and I will get the Vancouver empty home tax spreadsheet for you guys to read as well, to see whether this is something that we want to move forward with or not. Because I know this was one of those items that we wanted to do, and kind of those were the empty vacant building, but this is specifically for homes.
And this is Vancouver, Canada?
Yes, it is.
Vancouver, Canada?
Yeah.
Oh.
I believe that that comes from Canada. Now that you say that, now I'm questioning.
I, that's my, I'm just, I look here, this, I can't, the picture looks something.
Yeah, I think that's, so, because I know that they're, they're having a big article, they are able to raise some funds, and then this is able to help some of the construction issues that they're facing. So they've been able to raise some funds on that, so.
So you want to talk about that in the committee, so I should hold my comments.
No, if you want to make comments, like I said, I will make sure that everybody gets this information. Because I meant to get it to you earlier, but I didn't, I failed to do that, so.
Why can't we until we've all read it and then we can have a more likely discussion? I just had some thoughts about information that I heard recently about parking homes and stuff, moving on to that, but I can.
Sounds good. And?
I was just going to say, and I apologize if this was discussed in this meeting which I was absent from, but Director Becky and Councilmember Moran and I, I apologize to other people there, but we went to the SWIM Housing Youth Assessment Presentation, who are same consultants, who will be, who are doing our housing needs assessment. And one of the things that they emphasized as an important policy was to have a set of funds available to be able to move forward on housing. And so, you know, that's something that the empty home tax addresses the challenge. We have courses being able to raise funds under Dillon's rule, which is why abolishing Dillon's rule should be top priority. But, but, and so, you know, like, how do we do that? And the housing assessment consultants have some suggestions for that, but it is something that I think we need to have broader conversations publicly about how we address affordable housing. We have a lot of public conversations about homelessness in the community, which is basically the flip side of affordable housing.
Just a quick question, Allison, any idea when that report will be available?
We're anticipating the beginning of February.
Beginning of February. Okay.
Any other thoughts or ideas for the think tank?
If anybody really wants to go down the rabbit hole of this policy, I did research on land value tax, it's a different formulation of a property tax. And again, a lot of these things are not things that we can do as a city. What I, what I think we're likely to discover is that some sort of empty homes taxes probably would be challenged in court successfully, just be based on this, what the state law is right now in Washington, or how it's interpreted at least. So these are actions that sometimes I need to have a broader view of and have relationships and, you know, discussions with county officials and people like that to push them across the finish line. But there's a lot of ideas out there.
That's good. I will, before I give you things to read that are not applicable.
Well, it's fine. I'm definitely agree about that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate that, I really do. Okay.
We'd like to play.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, if I could just share relative to think tanks, I think it's important to make council aware that we did incorporate make council aware that we did incorporate a think tank at the last council meeting too, which was the second meeting of the month. And we did get some feedback from at least one council member that they'd like to see December 18th being a little bit shorter. So rather than doing the think tank the second meeting of the month in December, we moved it up to the first meeting of the month, and that likely we would continue with the second meeting of the month unless there's any objection from council. That would probably be our plan moving forward.
All right, so we'll be doing the first meeting.
Today is the?
Okay.
Just as.
I may have confused the issue, but I believe the standard would typically from here on out be the second meeting of the month.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, something that's in our heads for that second meeting of the month in January for the think tank is, I think that sometime we should tackle trucks downtown and a bypass of some sort, and that's something that is going to be a very long and hard discussion, and we should talk about it, and talk about it.
This is getting a little bit ahead of us, but to speak directly to that, which is that's one of the issues that I hope the planning commission will really get into, because the current company's plan is vague on where that alternative route is, and I think that we should be concrete on such an important planning decision. And so that's something I hope we get more traction from the planning commission. I know we've, I'm sorry, the conference plan, I have a review schedule coming up, it's not big, so I don't mean to get ahead of things, but that kind of detailed discussion is the sort of thing that people who live along those prospective routes are really concerned about, and I think should be given as much as much heads up that that's the plan as possible.
All right. Anything else? I want to move forward on to council reports. Jamie, you want to start as well?
Okay. Couple of things. By the way, I hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving, safe Thanksgiving. I made it out of town, so I don't know how hard it rained here, but it rained pretty horrific. I attended the, excuse me, the, I've got your stuff.
Sorry.
I attended the Northern Olympic Development Council's meeting at Finn River, and actually it was USDA award to Finn River side reading. And if you haven't been out there, it's a marvelous place, but they've done tremendous environmental and just farming innovations there. They provide, actually, they provide almost enough electricity through solar patents to actually run the town of Chimcom, which is not a big deal, but I mean, it was very nice. And so we got to tour Finn River, and we're there to have the Department of Agriculture do the Finn River Special Recognition Award, and that was really nice. I was part of the quote unquote dignitaries, that I had to look that word up, I didn't realize that that applied. So for the ice on Skim Your Thunder, I know, but for the ice skating rink, ribbon cutting. And it was really cool to see Santa Claus arrive on the, and we can't call it a Zamboni because it's not really a Zamboni, it's a Zambini is what we're calling it, because it's a smaller, but Santa Claus arrived on the resurfacing machine, and that was a great, great occasion, over 200 people there. Maria and I have been volunteering at the ticket booth, and we've just seen a tremendous inflow of folks coming and enjoying the skating, and every one of them is leaving with a smile on their face. And so I don't know whether they're going to make any money at this, but boy, I tell you what, it's a great time, and the lights that Andrew May put up there are just spectacular. And, but that ribbon cutting ceremony was fabulous, and then, so I enjoyed that. So anyway, Mike?
Yeah, a great couple of busy weeks. One of the more fun things that I did was go to the Port Angeles Downtown Association's Downtown Rhythm Society Ceremony, and Colm Transit was there with Santa on the bus, it was a lot of fun. It was just great to see a lot of people downtown in the winter, and thanks to that new ice rink, we're seeing a lot of people downtown consistently. And so far as I know, I think we're having really good attendance numbers there, and it's just, it was really exciting, because I was also doing that opening, and it was a lot of fun, and there's just people on the ice all the time. My family went down there this last Sunday, and my son fell and fell and fell, and we couldn't get him to stop. He'd just keep on getting right back up and skating, and it was great. I also went to a Port Angeles Business Association presentation about the new Downtown Performing Arts Center. Really excited to see the progress they're making in fundraising and the plans that they have, and so it's really, it's just going to be a real transformational thing to see that happen downtown. And that's why I keep on bringing up the issues I do downtown, is because every time I think about the changes that I think we're going to be seeing in the next few years downtown, we have some planning to do, and we have some work to do to make sure that that growth is managed properly. So it's a really exciting time to be in government, but there's a lot of heavy lifting yet to do. One of the, we just had a Chamber Commerce Board meeting a week or so ago, easily the most exciting board that I'm on through the city of Port Angeles or in general. It's really, we just had a new slate of new board members that are coming on, and the Chamber Commerce, so many things, great leadership from our capture. One of the really exciting things is they're cooperating with the theaters for Lincoln Theater, they've put on a show at Lincoln in the rough, starting just in a couple of days, December 7th, I believe, and they have multiple showings going on. So I really hope everybody goes out and supports the Lincoln, and I really appreciate the city working with them to allow people inside that building. So, thank you.
Well, I was on vacation for the last month in Shalpas, Mexico, and so I think, in particular, Councilmember French for stepping up for two Colm Transit meetings, and thank you for the whole council, or excuse me, for the last meeting. I wasn't able to mention it, but I mean, the mention of like the Lincoln Theater as a space, and one of the things that I saw a lot over the last month was very innovative uses of public space, some that just kind of made you wonder, and others that were just amazing, and just, you know, thinking like, wow, this would not happen with US building codes. And, you know, what can happen when you have a transportation network that allows you to get really anywhere you want to go? And the amazing urban vitality that comes with a lot of that. And so it's something, you know, from the previous, basically, year of experience in the council, also with Colm Transit, seeing what we deal with on the inside of government, and then having the opportunity to travel in a country that has much more Spanish architectural roots and in different cultures in many ways, although still very North American. It's an important perspective on government and what we do, and what we consider as taken for granted, and what, you know, what we also could learn from in that way. So I realize that's pretty vague, but I'll leave it there, it's a wonderful meeting. Thank you. Good to be back. Temperature's low, hope.
I'm going to pass for my voice, I'll tell you more next time.
Went to the ballet. I see Chief Smith smiling over there, he probably went three times. He did. So that was great. It was, this is the first year at least, had a Friday night showing, wasn't overly busy, Saturday was, night was a little busier, and Sunday matinee show was packed. Oh, and yes, the honorable Mayor Dr. Sissybrake. I was a little thrown back at first when I was standing there in the back, because they have on Sunday night, they have the scholarship to get out. She can talk about that. And I am the council member that, sorry, come 7:30 at the next meeting, this chair will be empty. So is my daughter's last year of the holiday concert at the high school, and it is always, always on the third Tuesday of the month. So it's a big rush to get out of here to go up there, and this year, I'm going to make it on time.
I had an opportunity, as others have, to get the ribbon cutting for our Winter Village, and our ice rink, it's a Winter Village, it's not, it's not just the, it's the ice rink, but you get hot cocoa, and it's just, Santa is there, and, I mean, it was just a community embracing, I love it. But Mark Apshire first, I came to the lodging tax committee, it was an idea. We gave him a few shekels and said, come back with details if you want some real money. You know, it was just a concept, and now look, it's just everybody pulled together, and I'm proud of Port Angeles, and it's really fun.
So I get some good stuff and bad stuff, and I will begin with a really heartbreaking story that we're losing Steve Hopkins at Colm Transit. And so I just wanted to thank him for all his hard work, his absolute thinking out of the box, great leadership. Colm County has been just the beneficiary of some very intelligent leadership, and he's changed the perception of transit, not just being for folks who don't have cars, and the amount of ridership, he just continues to go up. So I just, again, just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and hopefully we'll see if we can keep moving the area at all. The second thing was the skating, it was a lot of fun. We will be taking into, I'm hoping to be able to do one of those lunch things and grab some folks and go skating on Monday, we'll see if that works. I'm going to announce that the next housing task force is December 11th, at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock. The ballet awards, we have some really, really talented students. I was impressed, from the little ones to all ages, they were amazing. So I was really grateful to be able to do that. I was also down there when they opened that L.A. Park, down the park that's right next to the reservation, and CBI, the Coastal Washington Institute, opened that up. Very grateful to see so many structures out of there, so much, so many rocks and concrete that they removed, and so that shoreline has been, it's coming back to life, it's wonderful. Also participated in the first movie of the Green, the Green Link, and that is, we're hoping to be able to identify, whether it's two creeks or one, to be able to make a plan for them, and then move with projects for restoration, and also potential where they meet trails or things like that, see how we can work that. But it's a bank of college, and it's grateful to get that moving forward. And also had a wonderful conversation with a couple of scientists that I got a chance to meet when I went to the National Science Foundation, put together this thing on coastal, coastlines and people, and so made some connections there, and they're going to try to also want to help us with some of our climate action plan. They've also potentially, or they'll become, whether they do a project here or not, might be something really interesting. So with that, that is the end of my report. So, sign in.
Madam Mayor, council, we have a number of items on for your information this evening. One that I'd like to highlight is the great work by the Planning Commission and Community Economic Development Department on getting the schedule moving forward for the comp plan review schedule update, and Ms. Breckie can certainly answer any questions regarding that topic. Additionally, just to reiterate that the strategic plan work session agenda is in your packet as well, and we look forward to that strategic planning retreat. Council, I do want to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about trees, and I think that's important. I also want to take the time to talk a little bit about the sequoia tree, because it is a very important issue to staff, and I think it's really critical that everyone know, both on council and the audience, that the land ethic of our staff members is extremely high. It's important to us that we take care of the environment, that we take care of trees within our jurisdiction, it's extremely important to us, and I want to stress that. I know that a number of challenges were highlighted earlier in the evening as far as some of the issues that have occurred in the past, and I'm very optimistic that with the passion that we have on council, as well as the commitment of staff, that we can make a lot of policy changes moving forward that are greatly going to improve outcomes and improve the situation. And don't get me wrong, we have a great deal of work to do, but I do want to highlight some of those things that we have in place today. And I am very proud that we do in fact have a street policy ordinance in place, that we also have an additional street policy beyond just that ordinance. We also have continued to sponsor training in multiple departments, hundreds of hours of training dedicated to learning about the value and importance of trees through our community and the value importance of canopy. I think that's so important to mention. I think it is also important to note that we do still continue to have a dedicated tree account with money in it for tree plantings. I think that's important to mention, and that's something that can be utilized in the future for future planting projects. I think, again, I want to mention too, that the care and the concern about tree plantings is so important, that if you look back at all of our major capital projects in the past 10 years, I think you will find that we did a substantial number of tree plantings for all of those projects, because we do care and because it is important to us. I want to talk about transparency, because I think it's also been something that council has set the tone, that they expect transparency, and that we certainly expect transparency of our staff. And I think it's important that we very much want to ensure people are participating in the meetings, specific to the sequoia tree. I think it's, that there have been six different Parks and Recreation Beautification Commission meetings, where there's been an opportunity for the public to weigh in and provide feedback. We've also had two informational items in the council packet for opportunity for public to weigh in and provide feedback. I think it's important for all members of the public to know that you can sign up for, basically, go to the city website, and you can sign up, and you can receive notice for any of those agendas. Take a look at the agendas at home, decide whether there are things that you want to attend the meeting for, and come and weigh in. I think if you look back over time, I'm extremely happy to look back and see that over a year and a half ago, we took the time, instead of just cutting down a tree, to stop and pause and think through what we were doing, recognize that there were city citizen concerns, take the time to bring those citizens together as part of a committee to reevaluate a decision that was made by a city arborist, and then get a third party opinion from another arborist in response to those citizen concerns. I think that's a good step. I think it's also a good step that, again, we paused tonight to take time to listen. But I think it's also important that ultimately, none of us have a desire to go out and start removing trees, but I will tell you, we have an obligation to ensure that risks and liabilities to the city of Port Angeles are eliminated. And I think it's really important that council know that. I do very much want to hear from council tonight if they have any concerns with us continuing to move forward with the administrative decision that's already been made relative to this tree, but know we are committed to moving forward with reevaluating policy, looking forward to the future, and how we can better foster better support of trees and canopy in the community.
I mean, if the goal is to eliminate liability, then that leads to eliminating trees, because trees are liabilities. I mean, we don't, I mean, they're on people's heads, there's a fall hazard, there's a safety hazard, they impact utility lines, they could fall on people's houses. I mean, so if our bottom line is eliminating liability, then that leads to getting rid of trees. So we have to be more comprehensive about what our goals are, and recognize that there's risks with having trees, yet at the same time, the easier to improve property value, they create all sorts of environmental benefits. There's all sorts of reasons why planting street trees, for example, is one of the simplest things we can do to improve quality of life and value in Port Angeles. So, yeah, I'd like to know what the process is moving forward, because for me, what I hear from people in the community is just disagreeing with some of the fundamental facts that city staff are relying on to go forward with this decision. That's what I heard at the Public Commerce meeting. And so when there's disagreement at that level, I think if we move forward with a decision that can't be taken back, I mean, it's 60 years to go a 60-year-old tree. I mean, it's 60 years to go a 60-year-old tree, then, you know, we move forward with, without the trust of the community. And I think it's better to take the time to go back and reevaluate rather than move forward easily with a decision that really can't be undone.
Anybody else that could chime in?
I will, I guess. So I really appreciate Nathan's comments because I think that you sound like a lot more I know. I will say, the one thing that really is in my head and I just want to, one of the public comments is sort of the house was moved to that location in the 1990s and I just want to know if that's true. Because I, it does seem that if that house was moved knowingly right next to the fast growing sequoia, that we aren't as liable as I thought we were.
So I can tell you that information was new to us tonight. If you look at the assessor records on the county website, it does indicate that the house was constructed there in 1943. That doesn't mean what we are tonight is inaccurate, it simply means that we haven't had the time to research it because that's new information here.
So that would be the one factor that I would want researched. Other than that, I mean, I appreciate Nathan's comments because I do think the best time to plant a tree is 60 years ago. The, we've had a system in the city where I think, you know, trees and pavement fight. And I think we have too much pavement and I think that in our history, pavement usually won those fights. And I don't think they should. I think the trees should win sometimes and I think pavement should lose. That, you know, at the same time, I do appreciate that we have had a change in our staff's understanding of the value of those trees in since, you know, some recent amount of years. And I do, I trust going forward, I trust Nathan's comments. And I do believe that staff values trees, I do believe that staff plants trees and that's good enough for me. I, we've had conversations as a council before about Tree City USA and that designation. I want that designation, but I, more than I want it, I want it to mean something. And so I want, like I said, I want trees in medians, I want trees in neighborhoods, I want trees in, you know, like the presentation said, I think trees help us mitigate stormwater risk. I think that at the same time, any policy that happens is not about one specific tree. And I recognize that my job is to limit liability. And so, you know, if we are liable and if we are, then I understand that unpleasant decisions have to be made. And so I'm fine with that. But that one fact I would like to ground trip on because I think that it is relevant.
My comment is simply this, it, this is, we have to be very clear that this is an administrative decision and we are not making a decision as a council to remove this tree or not. Looking back over this and listening to Nathan's comments and doing the research also, this process on this particular tree has been ongoing for over two and a half years. And so once staff made the decision to remove this tree, we as a council are not involved in it anymore. It's a staff decision, it's an administrative decision. It would be no different than us going to the Public Works Department and saying, "Okay, you need to start painting this color yellow on these particular curves and we want the color to be made up of this pigment." Again, remember, we set the policy and I'm fine with tree policies, general tree policy. But when it comes down to specific actions, we have to be very careful about stepping over the bounds and micromanaging department heads that are taking their job seriously, but taking their job as they see they need to do it. And that's not our position to step in between them and their job. And so again, I caution the council about trying to make a decision about this particular tree. Again, Mike, I'm fine with a policy, a general policy on trees, but I'm not going to tell the Public Works Department what color to paint the sidewalks either. So that's my only comment on that. So it's an administrative decision, let's let the staff handle it and set general policy and let them do the day-to-day work.
And I agree with Jim also on that. And, you know, to add on to Mike's comment, right tree, right place. The number of trees and the expense the city had to put out to take all those trees out of downtown to get the right trees back in place, I think needs to be noted. And that some things maybe got overlooked a long time ago that wasn't on staff now, but it needs to be looked at in the future, that needs to be the tree policy. And I think that's something the staffs were very worried on and that they recognize that yes, we have some issues with trees pushing up the sidewalks and that is liability. And folks trip over those sidewalks and one more executive session after another. And it's a staff decision for the safety and thought they put into that. And I think it really comes down to right tree, right place, wrong tree, wrong place. And that's what it comes down to for me and that's staff's decision to make that. And I don't think that they just sat around and flipped the coin on that. That was a lot of years of process put through to that to get to that decision.
I compliment staff on the lengthy and thoughtful process they've gone through. It is no longer a council decision, it is a staff decision. I appreciate that we are here to listen to public comment, but at this point, it's out of our hands. And I, you know, it means a lot that it's, it has taken a long time because it shows careful consideration of this matter. Mr. Blor, has the city had to pay for liability for lawsuits because of sidewalk issues in the past?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I need to question the last.
Has the city been sued for damages because of sidewalk issues in the past? Did you see sidewalks that were brooded and uneven?
Yes.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. Thank you. We have had.
Just change your question. Your question was, is the city liable or is the city?
No, I'm just, I'm sorry, sir. I was just making a point that we have had an executive session. We've had to settle liabilities for sidewalks that were uneven and people had been harmed. We, so I appreciate staff's thoughtful and caring way and that's why we hire good staff. And it's no longer a council decision, but thank you for the way it's being handled.
So I want to chime in in that these trees are a liability. But we have a couple of arborists telling you that this is a high-risk tree because its main trunk has got a split and then at that split, the union is weak. It's a sequoia tree which is a very fast-growing tree, so therefore it's in general weaker, the rings are further apart. We have to, I guess I feel like we have to listen to that. If the arborists come back and say, "No, this one, you know, it's a saddle tree." And I was able to sit in some of that subcommittee work and, you know, take a really penta look at that report. And I'm not an expert in trees, but I also know that sometimes they do get vulnerable. And at this one, regardless of where it's at, that split is something that, that it alone puts that tree as a much higher liability than any other tree. So, so from that standpoint, you know, I, I'm a landscape architect, I plant trees. That would, that's, you know, I use trees for meditation for all sorts of things. But I've also seen amazing trees, you know, not being in a place where it makes sense for them to be. And I just wish that the tree ended up planted somewhere else where it would be, if it fell down and broke because of the way it's growing, that it wouldn't hurt anybody. You know, it wasn't, you know, closer to an area where there is less access for kids and people, anyway. So I'm just, I'm not happy about what I can specifically do about the tree. But the one thing we do have is that we can mitigate with planting a lot of trees. We have the funds for that, we have a committee that looks at our canopy. Where else should, where should we be planting trees to increase our canopy? How can we help Port Angeles get back to having a really healthy canopy? That we can do. And so I want us to come together around that. It just, like I said, it was, it's, it's hard when people are willing to put, the reason to have stopped that was with the danger to people climbing trees before it was cut. And also some of this information that, you know, writing to people, they're like, "Oh, I'm sorry." It's a very emotional issue about cutting a tree. Nobody wants to do it. No one wants to do that, but it's, it's one of those decisions that I feel like it is a hard decision to make. We need to protect people and let's plant the trees to mitigate, you know, the taking down the tree. And let's use what this tree is giving us and make something beautiful for the city, you know, if we can at all.
So I'll speak in opposition to most of what the council members have said. If this was a thorough two and a half year planning process, then why are city staff hearing a lot of new information for the first time tonight? That doesn't really make sense. I agree that this is a legislative decision for the city and that in many ways, I think this tree's, it was sealed by the arborist report. That said, what I've heard today is, you know, a lot of questions about what is actually the impact on the adjacent property owner? What assumptions are we making in this decision? And generally, I am concerned more about the relationship between the city and the community in how this goes forward. I don't see consideration of the mix of options between complete removal and grinding the stump or just leaving the stump as an artifact and keeping the tree alive. There's a variety of options and we don't seem to consider those as a city. So for example, in Lincoln Park, our policy right now is to turn the southwest corner of Lincoln Park into what will eventually be a grassy airstrip for the airport. We're not talking about habitat trees, we're not talking about restoring ecological function in that space. We're not talking about replanting trees that won't grow to be interfering with the airspace. We're not, we're not doing that, we're just removing the trees. And so I see what people looking there are saying and it's not my decision to make, I agree with that. But I also understand why there's distrust on both sides on this issue. I also understand, I mean, I appreciate Director Delacott, he went to the citizen group accountable for this and did that multiple times. So I understand his perspective on it. And I think in many ways he did the right thing in seeking citizen input. So, you know, it's a challenging emotional issue, I agree with that. But, you know, we shouldn't be making decisions that cannot be undone when we're finding new information for the first time that, that beguiles a process that needs to be reflected on. I think our role as a council is to make sure that we have good policies in place. And this is something for us to look at definitely more thoroughly in the future, not just with the garden of trees and parks, but also trees in other public right of ways, trees on private property. We're dealing with a lot of tree issues in the city and they take a long time to grow. I mean, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, the second best time that I own is now. We're not really doing much of that as far as I've seen. I know there's trees in a lot of the projects that we put forward, but when we're talking about a lot of these cases, we're moving forward with removal without a plan on what to do in the future. And so that's my two cents. I do agree that it is an administrative decision, not a council decision. I hope that the administration chooses to continue to consult with the community and make sure that we have all the facts sorted out before making a decision that cannot be undone.
And I'd like to add that the fact that that building got moved into that location, what did come up at the subcommittee and I just forgot about it. So I apologize for that because I know that that fact did come out, that those houses were moved. I just didn't remember about, you know, the specifics.
Don't you think that's relevant? If someone's, you know, accepting liability, you know, I bought a house that was driven by trees, I accept that.
Right. Right. And it's, and I guess it is, it went to the state, people have said, this is a tree that's in, I know, I don't, hang on, hang on, it's, it's in a city park. And because it's, that tree in a city park, that because it's got that split leader, that's what makes it a high risk. And so I, you know, our insurance company has been told that the city has been, it's been recommended by a professional arborist that because this tree has a split leader and it's a weak union, that's why it didn't come out. And so that's the part of the city's liability to the, because it's in a public park. And so that alone is an issue. So.
It's a tough one.
It's a really tough.
So every tree in Lincoln Park that has a split leader or a broken top, you recommend removal?
I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying that this is one that is in a park where it's a, you know, because of the way it is, I don't know. In, this is, you know, in a park where you have the space, an open space for, you know, I'm not sure. It is one of those things that an arborist, and they know more than I do, an arborist told us that it was rated as a high liability because of that weak double leader.
I mean, the only other thing that I would just like, you know, again, this is just a tough situation on all sides. The one thing that I would like us to consider is when citizens come to us and say, "Hey, I don't like this tree, I want it to be cut down." What is our response? Is our response to say, "We value trees?" Or is our response just to immediately say, "Okay." So, and I don't think that happened here, but, you know, I just wanted that to be on our minds. Like, we educate each other, as was mentioned, on value of trees. How effective are we at educating the public? When I was a kid, we had a tree on our, that we thought was on our property, that was removed by the city. And so it's kind of an odd, it was a weird situation and that was a very different time. This is, you know, 20 years ago. But the pavement won, the pavement wins. And I don't think that's right every time. I think the trees should be in a lot of situations. So this is a tough one. I, like you're saying, the fact that it's creating liability because it's in a public park, that's tough. But I don't want the city to carry liability.
If William Shortpool said, "Our job is to reduce liability," they would close because.
The skating rink too.
The skating rink too, the ice rink. Well, right, if our job is to eliminate liability.
On city property.
Right? Like, that is a very different goal than what our job really is, which is to support health, safety and welfare for the people of Port Angeles.
Right. And I would agree with Stacey except with the fact that when you weigh liability, right? So when someone tells you, "This is a really high liability, you know, most trees are not, this one is." So, you know, do we do something about it or not? So that's, I guess, the question. It's, it was rated with a high liability and I have, I have to listen to that.
In this specific situation, I'm happy to continue to that point. Overall, I want to make sure that our planning policies are not being driven by our insurance company.
Anybody else that could chime in? All right. So.
So Madam Mayor, thank you for the additional input and appreciate it. And just know that staff too is very interested in doing everything we can to maintain trust with the community and have conversations. I think, I did want to mention one other item that we have not lost track of the fact that we did plan to put roofing permits on a future agenda. That is still on our radar, just know we haven't lost sight of it. There's just been a number of other things that have come up that have detracted from that.
What kind of permits?
Roofing permits?
House roof.
In relation to public comments about the cost of roofing permits?
Correct.
And that people usually rerooft when it's a necessity and helps maintain existing structures.
Correct. And we, and we may simply schedule that for.
Correct, and we may simply schedule that for an upcoming election session.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are now at our second public comment period, so.
Great, thank you. Good timing. So, I appreciate the discussion about the sequoia tree, and I wanted to, I really appreciate some good inquiries from council. So, I wanted to address first specifically some of the issues that you have raised. And note that I, Elizabeth Dunn, was part of that subcommittee that was formed for this stressless treaty. I will also note that I found out about the tree being cut down from the neighbor who lives in Squim, who owns the property in the back. That is how I found out about it. It was going to be cut down without any notice to the public initially. So, I appreciate that the city and the Parks Department worked to communicate with us. Also know that your citizens, your constituents have worked very hard to add light to this process and to demand a fair process, and continue to do so. So, as to whether it is a city council issue, I would ask you to consider the fact that as elected officials of the city council, you have a responsibility to the community and to your constituents, and to hear them and to hear their concerns. Now, many cities have tree protection ordinances. Those are ordinances passed by the city council, not just policies. I don't mean to say just to mean that, but not policies put in place by department heads. They are ordinances enacted by the city council. So, you do have the ability to enact a tree protection ordinance that addresses this and other issues regarding trees in the city of Port Angeles. As to the liability question, I find that one very interesting. Because in this situation, you have, you do have tree roots impacting a secondary, what I'll call a secondary driveway. It is not a primary access to either the neighboring house or to the house in back. In fact, there's some dispute as to whether the house in back, owned by Markie Normandin and rented out to tenants, even has the right to access that easement. So, there's a dispute between those two property owners in general. So, I would also point out, on the liability front, is that the admission, so saying that if the city takes a position that it has to cut down this tree or any tree, that its roots are impacting a drought, and then goes on to conclude that, without any documented evidence that I've seen, that the tree is impacting a water line and a foundation, which there's no evidence of. The city, in my opinion, is actually setting itself up for a great amount of liability related to those other costs that have nothing to do, in this case, with the tree. Factually, there's no connection between the water line and any, there's no foundation damage that is clear, even from, and it's visual inspection of the house, even from the arborist who the city hired, the outer-city arborist, to do this assessment. It is clear that there is no foundation damage. I could quote from the report, I provided you an email with that information, and it states that it might. I believe it was, it was the, there's a potential, there's a potential for the foundation of the house to be damaged by tree roots. That was in the City Council Information Package Page L10 on 41718. There's a potential. So, there are ways that we can address that potential. So, I would ask to continue to address a few of the other points because I believe that there has been a lot of misinformation spread about this situation. But unfortunately, it is not coming from the public side, it is coming from the city's side.
So, I'm going to need you to wrap up, because that way to be fair to everybody. So, is it possible for you to write that out for us, and then we can know that?
I will write that out. I would like to add one point because it is a point that you've spoken to, and I understand why it would be a point of concern from anybody just hearing this information and not taking a critical review of the report compared by Kevin McFarland. And that is the issue of whether the tree is actually posing a hazard. There is no evidence that the tree is actually posing any current risk. Kevin McFarland said in his report, this is his report that the city obtained, says that the tree is a healthy tree. It is not a high-risk, he said that it is a high-risk tree based on the fact that there is no timeframe in the report.
Excuse me, point what? Okay, this is, this is done. Three minutes is what is allocated. 9:45 is supposed to be the end.
She said, "Listen to all of you." That were hazardous.
Yes, okay. So, the tree is not hazardous. I ask you to look at that report, ask, you look at the other information before you, and the best management practices, and we get a best management plan in place for this tree, and then we have an effective tree protection ordinance passed by a city council.
Thank you.
Minister Smith, Port Angeles. This is the first community I've ever lived in that doesn't have tree zoning laws for both tree protection and to establish what exceptional trees are in the area that add to the ambiance of the neighborhood. I'd really like, it is up to you guys to pass some laws that we've never had on the books here, to define what are valuable trees and what aren't valuable trees. It's not about risk, it really isn't. It's about, it's about zoning. It's about the benefit to a community to have a lot of trees in it. It's about the tree canopy and how that protects us. A stronger ordinance really would create a stronger stewardship of our canopy. I'd really like to look at Seattle's recent ordinance, it's a big pass because they're excellent. You know, I lived in Berkeley for a while. In Berkeley, you have to get the approval of all of your neighbors within a two-block area to cut down a tree. Seattle actually made something even better, which is you have to get a permit from zoning if you want to cut down a tree larger than 12 inches. These make sense. I mean, I probably have more trees on my property than most people in Port Angeles because I have a large couple of acres and I have huge mature trees. And I've had city staff come onto my property and cut a tree without my permission. There's no zoning against that, there's no rules against it. If they want to, they can come do that. That's not right, it's my private property. And if this tree is such a huge issue for the city, then sell it to a private party. You know, there are lots of ways you can skin this cat. But I think cutting a tree that has any people behind it is a slap to the face to our community, and we're having a hard time having a community here. I mean, the whole issue that Mr. Moran brought up about people, you know, under age 30 don't want to, you know, don't want to volunteer, that's because they feel disenfranchised. You know, that's the community's fault. Thank you.
I'm Steve Hopkins, representing myself as a private citizen of the city of Port Angeles. I really want to commend the city council for its unanimous support of having youth representation on its committees. And knowing that transportation can be a concern, and also knowing personally how long it can take to get certain things passed, I'll just donate the first $20 worth of transit passes for the students to do that. Just because it is so important. So, thank you for your support for that. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Tyson Lee. For the next 24 hours, I would like the first four people in this room to take in an exercise of non-breathing. For the next 24 hours after that, the next four people. Four people after that the next day. This old growth sequoia tree provides a day's worth of oxygen for four people every day. We need to honor that. Last year, this city was inundated with smoke from DC Forest fires. Climate change is a real threat. This tree may be considered by some to be the wrong tree in the wrong place. We are the right community to create the right tree in a new space. This tree has provided unity, community involvement, and participation in a way that other things cannot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wrote a song for the tree. I see that tree in you. That's why I love you. I feel your seed in me. That's why I love you. And I want to hold you in my arms. I want to shelter you from harm. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah. You get the scarf because you liked it. And you get the seat.
This tree went.
Anybody else want to speak to council on any item or issue?
Ellen Petchett, Port Angeles. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you all on the process that you've been working with tonight and things that have happened since I've been here before. Quite exciting to see the collaborativeness amongst you. Secondly, I have been hearing a bit about this tree and the choices that have to be made. And I just want to express my opinion, even though I am truly a tree hugger and had three amazing trees in our yard that we had to cut down because they were a danger to our neighborhood and to all of us who live there because they were the wrong trees and the wrong places, and they were huge and also beginning to split. In this particular situation, and hearing some of the comments about the trees, I find curiosity, or not curiosity, I find, I feel dismay that we, some individuals seem to be thinking that what's more important are the trees survived than that we prevent danger that's likely going to come because of global warming and the big winds we've begun to have that seem to be increasing. I'm pretty sure, I would think, in the not-too-distant future, if the tree that's there isn't addressed in the same way, we will be losing people that we love or that someone else loves. So, please think about that, and good luck to all of us going forward.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to address, council? All right, so that closes the second public comment period, and we are adjourned.